Today is Tuesday, June 14. It's 3:41 PM. This is a Prescott City Council voting meeting. Do we have any introductions or announcements today?
Well, of course we do, Mr. Mayor.
Before you get started, I know Ashley Couch has a couple of new department heads he wants to introduce. So we'll let Ashley have her.
Good afternoon, Mayor Good, members of council. I'm very excited to announce a big addition to our leadership team in Public Works. First is Janet Ramsey. She's going to be our new deputy director over operations. And then Steve Olfers is going to be our new utilities manager. I'll invite them to just say a few brief words. I know we're running late. Janet, you go first.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for having me. I just want to let you know I've been with the -- I'm an Arizona native. I've about a million years of operational experience, mostly in the valley. But Prescott is my ideal home. It's where we've always wanted to be. I have a lot of history. My folks had a place here as well. And so I'm so happy to join you. I can't wait to work with you, and I think it's going to be great team and like great collaboration. So thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Mayor and council, thank you. Again, my name is Steve Olfers. As Janet said, I have a million years of operational experience throughout the valley area, both Phoenix and Mesa. And this is where I want to be as well. And I look forward to this opportunity, and I thank you for the opportunity and the challenge that I'm being presented with City of Prescott. Thank you.
And welcome to you.
Look forward to having you. And Ashley will tell you, I do recommend that he not exaggerate. Mayor Protem.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, announcement number one. Starting today, Prescott residents can apply for minor home repair funds through the new Prescott Minor Home Repair Program. The program was created to help individuals and families maintain safe and stable housing in the city. The program can provide up to $5,000 in minor home repairs. To qualify, individuals must be residents of Prescott. The home must be owner occupied and a primary residence, and individuals and families must meet federal income guidelines. For more information or to apply for Prescott home repair funding, visit www.prescott.org or call 928-445-2000. Next, tonight is Zoo by Moonlight at the Heritage Park Zoological Sanctuary from 7:30 to 9:30. Zoo by Moonlight is held from May through October. The nocturnal residents will be active. See the clouded leopards, wolves, coyotes, and all the rest by the light of a full moon. It's a howling good time. Bring your flashlights and your curiosity. The docents will be available. For more info, call 928-778-4242 or go online to heritageparkzoo.org. And finally, tomorrow, Wednesday, June 15, is the If Horses Could Talk: The Art of Bill Nebiker at the Fippen Museum from 10 to 4 PM through July 24. Visit the retrospective exhibit of award-winning Western artist Bill Nebiker, a Prescott native and esteemed cowboy artist. Call 928-778-1385 or go online at fippenartmuseum.org for more info. Now get out there and enjoy yourselves.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We'll now have an invocation by Rabbi Julie Coslow from the Temple Barith Shalom, and then a pledge of allegiance conducted by Councilman Shishka.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Julie Coslow, and I am the rabbi and spiritual leader of the community. It's a synagogue without walls here in Prescott. It is an honor for me to have this sacred task of offering an invocation to this gathering, to our mayor Phil Good, to our mayor Protem Kathy Ruasing, and to the devoted members of the city council chamber. Those of us committed to public life, well-known, now with any great devotion comes great responsibility. The model of good governance by which you so passionately divine your mission, define your mission is indeed the foundation for all good and vital government. I feel that it is my duty today, since you asked, to offer words of the highest ethical imperative, so as to remind each of you to bring yourselves to the center of your mission, to the essence of your commitment, and to the very privilege of your status. The city council and their staff are here for the sole purpose of being in service to the residents of this beautiful city, and that is no small charge. Your singular voice must speak for all. Your passion for healthy, inclusive, compassionate, vibrant community must reach to all of those in this jurisdiction. May it be God's will that the highest good continues to inspire your actions. May it be God's will that the love of all God's creatures motivates your highest humanity and concern for the most vulnerable. May it be God's will that you are led by the imperative for the striving of the greatest good for all, as you gather to create policy and vibrant life here in everyone's hometown of Prescott. May it be, may God guide your steps with strength and clarity and vision to see the road that lies ahead towards an even brighter future for all of God's children who live here. And with gratitude for all you do, I wish you strength, insight, and most importantly, God's grace. Thank you.
Would you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please be seated. We'll have roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Ruasing.
Here.
Councilwoman Hall.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilman Shishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
All are present.
All right, we will now have three presentations, followed by three proclamations. So presentation number one is swearing in of our new city attorney, Joseph Young. Imagine you've taken this oath a couple of times in your career.
I have.
Well, I'm very pleased to be able to offer this oath for you for the position of City of Prescott attorney. So raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Joseph Young.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of the position of city attorney.
Of the position of city attorney.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm. Thank you.
Welcome.
I just want to thank the mayor and Mayor Protem and council, and also the residents and citizens of Prescott. I started my career in the legal field at the law firm of Snell &amp; Wilmer in Phoenix about 17 years ago, 15 years ago. But I spent the last seven years as chief deputy county attorney in Apache County. I've loved Prescott. I'm excited to be here, and I will do my best to serve you, so appreciate it.
Welcome. Next, we'll have a presentation from APS regarding Fire Management and Mitigation Annual Update.
My name is Mackenzie Rogers, and I'm the Northern Arizona Division Director for your APS. As we are currently seeing the impacts from the pipeline fire up in Flagstaff, timing is better than ever to share what your utility is doing to be prepared for this fire season. Reliability and safety are number one for APS. This is the APS promise. The only thing more important to us as a company than the reliability of our system is the safety of our customers and our communities. This promise is what is that we will do what is right for the people and the prosperity of the state, and this is our honor and commitment to you and all of your residents. In 2021, Arizona experienced 1,400 reported fires that burned over 600,000 acres of land, mainly caused by almost 402,000 lightning strikes across the state, which is more than double what we saw in 2019 and '20 combined. That made last year's fire season one of the most impactful year-to-date. However, this year, with the early start, we're on track for a very active, very early fire season, as we saw with the crooks in Tunnel 2 and now the pipeline fire. As I mentioned, APS has a plan for that. Our plan is broken into prevention, mitigation, and response, and I'll touch on each of those in the next slides. From a prevention standpoint, every year we work on maintaining and clearing right-of-ways on our equipment to ensure that we mitigate the fuels around our infrastructure. Often, fire, we, the fire agencies use our right-of-ways as fire breaks as well. We also identify teams to patrol and correct any potential issues that could cause wire to file fall in the high-fire-risk areas by conducting public safety line patrols on all overhead equipment across the heavy wildland urban interface area and heavily vegetated area. That's about 5,000 miles across the state, over 1,900 of that in northwest, which is Yavapai County. And during these, we physically walk down every line with the use of drones, UTVs, and by foot to put eyes on the condition of every piece of equipment. This is our distribu-- or sorry, defensible space around poles program, or D-SAP as we call it. Just like the defensible space around your house, we clear within 10 feet around all of our equipment poles. Not only does this translate to faster restoration of service for customers, it also allows or it also helps the safety of our first responders and firefighters during a fire event by keeping the infrastructure intact. Most recently, in the backbone fire last year that occurred in Fossil Creek, we had a brand-new power line installed with 27 new poles in 2020. Because of the defensible space around those new poles, none of them even had char damage on them, so we know this works. And I couldn't get the picture updated fast enough, but we had a substation, and we have a really awesome picture of a substation in the pipeline fire that literally it went right around where our defensible space was, so saved that substation. So it works for us. It can absolutely work for your homes, too. Here are some different programs that are available. I'll touch on the Right Tree, Right Place on the next slide. I just want to point out this public safety phone number. If ever there is a concern, please reach out and call us, even if it might not be us. We're happy to come out and look and get you to the right agency. This is our Right Tree, Right Place program. We recognize that not everybody thinks the power lines are as pretty as I do, so we offer programs to give you safe trees and the distances to plant them, to support shielding them without causing potential impacts. Back to defensible space. It is important, and it works, so here's some tips on how to use defensible space, and we really encourage all customers to create a defensible space around their homes and properties. Some of you guys heard me speak last year, and we're reinstating the same measures to increase our operations protocols, so that if a line has a fault, before we re-energize that line, to ensure that our first responders patrol sections of that line with additional rigor during outages. This will result in longer-than-normal outages, because these patrols are often in the middle of the night or across very difficult terrain. And we have the highest level of local journeymen to identify the concern, and then a number of local area crews to respond to any repairs that are required. While reliability is something we pride ourselves on at APS, we recognize that this could prolong the outages in the area, but we prioritize the safety of our customers and communities above the reliability of our services. However, we're also leveraging more technology. We've installed over 2,500 fault indicators across our system. All these are is a non-communicating blinky light that when they don't sense the electrons, the light comes on, and they're installed throughout the system, and it helps direct our troublemen where to go. We also encourage customers, if they see a light on the line, we've kind of installed a bunch that we've got our customers now acting as APS employees, and they'll call in and tell us that light is on, and that helps us direct the first responders right to them. So if you see a light on the power line, please give us a call. Again, these are non-communicating devices. They only measure current. Some of you guys know Wade Ward. He is one of now five fire mitigation specialists that are employed by APS. They attend all community and coordinating meetings for Fire IC and support the priorities of Fire IC and the safety of our communities. And they work closely in conjunction with emergency management when there's an issue. We realize any disruption of power is a major inconvenience to customers, so we're trying to get the word out in as many different ways as possible and communicate the reasons behind these changes, and ensure customers are being communicated and know the tools available as much as possible. I'd like to encourage everybody to download the APS app, or you can go to APS.com for access to our outage map, which includes updates and estimated times of restoration. And you can also sign up for text alerts there, so you get a text message when you're out of power and when the power will be restored. Contrary to popular belief, we do not know when your power is out, so we also encourage you to call and notify us. If you do have the app, it is a one-click button to notify us of an outage, and then our dispatch center will see that, collate, and roll it up to the next device and send out the appropriate resources. Also, in the event of a prolonged outage, APS will set up ice stations or offer ice reimbursements that you can put in your freezers to keep food fresh. That information is also available on our APS.com outage map or on APS.com. Just keep the receipt for the ice. Speaking of which, if you keep refrigerators and freezers closed, food will stay fresh up to eight hours in the fridge and up to 24 hours in a freezer if the doors are kept closed. That's all we have. Any questions?
Any questions or concerns from the council? Mayor Protem.
Thank you. That was a wonderful presentation. I have a question. Do you ever proactively turn off the power in anticipation of a problem like they do in California?
Not yet. Not saying not ever, but we don't do that today. However, for example, like in the pipeline fire, in the event that there is a fire near the power lines and in conjunction with Fire IC or with the emergency management, we will turn off the power lines to protect the first responders on the ground. The smoke in the air can track and potentially electrocute the firefighters, so we do work really closely that we will turn off the power, and that could impact areas outside of the direct fire area because of how the lines are run. But we will turn off power proactively to support first responder safety.
Thank you. Good to know.
Thank you, Mackenzie. I know a few years ago, there was an effort by APS to try to get people who had very well-insulated homes to really turn on their air conditioning early in the morning to try to get their temperature down as low as possible, and then back off on their air conditioning demand throughout the day so that the peak load would be reduced. Do you still do that?
We do. It's called precooling, and now if you go to APS.com, you can get a free smart thermostat that's programmed to do it for you, so you don't even have to think about it. And if you do that, if any one or two degrees that you turn it up in that peak hours, which has been reduced from four, three to eight, now it's four to seven, or will be by the end of August, we're transitioning there right now, if you do that, you can save about $1 to $200 a year for every degree you go up. So, you know, certainly, we want you to be comfortable, but if you can tolerate a little hotter, if you turn that degree up during that four to seven, or if you want, I save about $80 a month just by precooling. So you turn it down, and then turn it off and ride through until seven, and especially with that smaller window and in the great climate that we live in, it's pretty easy to do.
Gee, I'm glad I asked. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Mackenzie. We look forward to a well-managed summer.
Of course.
Okay, our next presentation is for Catholic Charities Homeless Presentation.
My name's Anthony Cruz. I'm a homeless program manager, and Jared is our program manager for Veteran Services. So I'm just going to quickly go over some of our services that we offer. We offer rapid rehousing, which is a service for individuals that aren't necessarily homeless. They're homeless for one day. They have all the money to get into housing, but they just can't come up with those initial funds, moving costs, they're pretty pricey. So we'll step in and help those individuals. We also have permanent supportive housing, which helps individuals that have been homeless in the area at least one year combined over the course of three years. We also got a million-dollar grant through DES. It's an ESG, COVID-related. That has no income level, so anyone can apply for these. And we usually see these services used for individuals that have lost their job or have been laid off because of COVID, and we'll step in and we'll kind of assist them. Up to six months, we'll pay rental assistance, full rental assistance for six months. That can actually be extended, so it's for anyone. So anyone, middle-class, I'm sure everybody's seen some of these individuals come on hardships where they missed their, they had to be out for two weeks, and that position was filled. They were making $50,000 a year or in excess, and now they have no job. So we'll step in, assist those individuals for as long as needed, up to six months. It can be expanded up to 12 months, but that, of course, needs to be reviewed. We also have Veteran Services, which I'm going to pass over to Jared to talk about.
Yeah, so I represent Veterans Services. Our programs are very similar, veterans and non-veterans. We get people in quickly, when we can get them in, and that's kind of one of the reasons that we decided to come down and talk to the city council today. Anthony's programs are very well-funded. My programs are very well-funded, but we have a difficult, there's a housing crisis going on, as everybody knows, and it's an affordable housing crisis. It's, there was a map at one point a couple of years ago, it was showing where the housing crisis was happening, where there was an intense loss of affordable housing. There were some red spots on the map across the country, dots here and there. Now, the entire country's red. So this is going on everywhere. We've got the money, we've got the ability to put people in places, but we need to start coming up with creative solutions as to what we can do to start helping some of these veterans and non-veteran families that are facing homelessness. So we thought we'd come down here, introduce ourselves, and kind of let this be the initial discussion that we would like to have more with the city about what can be done. You know, we're well-funded. We're not looking for a handout. We're looking for ideas. We're looking for collaboration, possibly. We're looking for anything that we can do to help the people that we work with get into housing. They have so many barriers that they face, so many difficulties that they're facing, they can't really work on a lot of those things until they get into housing. It's really difficult to work on employment when you don't even have a place to go, you don't have a place to get mail, you don't have a place to get cleaned up every day and to go out and look for a job. And so we're hoping that this is the first discussion of many with the city and just really brainstorming and coming up with ideas. You know, we've got, every time we see an opening for a place, there's 15 people going after that same one. Kind of reminds me of that story in the Bible where Christ is at the pool of Bethesda, and it's like the first person that can get into the water as soon as it's bubbling gets helped. Well, our clients keep getting pushed out of the way so other people can get in, which is fine. Everybody needs housing, but we got to come up with some new and creative ideas. So we're hoping that this might be the first of many discussions between Catholic charities and the city. So we thank you for your time, and we'll definitely, you know, be reaching out to people and trying to continue that discussion, and we'd love to answer any questions that you guys have now or in the future.
I'm so glad you guys are here today. I'm familiar with your guys' organization. I've worked with Autumn a bunch before. It's a wonderful program that you guys have, and I think that hopefully things will start to slow down a little bit, at least on, it'll be good news on your end, right? But it's so competitive in Prescott, finding housing. So I think it's wonderful that you guys are bringing this to the city to try to find a solution, because I do think that there are, you know, people out there who are renting out second homes or investment properties. You know, it's a guaranteed paycheck from you guys. You know, you pay and you work with people, and, but you just see these homeless problems, you know, rampant in other places, and in Prescott, it'd be nice. It's really good what you guys are doing. I think it's wonderful, and I think I've seen a lot of creative solutions, and I think it's great that you've brought it to the city's attention and see if there's anything that we can do to work with you guys and what we ever, whatever we can do to help.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you guys for coming today. Yeah.
Mayor Protem Ruasing.
Thank you. You've been serving Catholic Social Services, has been serving the community for many years, I believe. When did you start?
I think it's 1975.
1975.
Yeah, it was originally Catholic Social Services, and I don't remember how many years it's been Catholic community, Catholic Charities Community Services.
Well, you've done a wonderful job serving the community, because if you weren't here, the problems would have been a lot worse. And I just would like to say, anybody out there who's listening, if they have rental properties, give these people a call and give a helping hand to a deserving homeless veteran. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I recall, I think Jesus himself helped that lame man at Bethesda. So we certainly could use his help today.
Definitely.
In many areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a proclamation, the Posttraumatic Stress Disorder Awareness Month. Whereas, post-traumatic stress disorder, PTSD, can occur after a person experiences trauma, including but not limited to the stress of combat, rape, sexual assault, child abuse, bombings, accidents, and natural disasters, and affects approximately 8 million adults in the United States annually. And PTSD is associated with chemical changes in the body's hormonal system and autonomic nervous system, and is characterized by symptoms including flash- system and autonomic nervous system, and is characterized by symptoms including flashbacks, nightmares, insomnia, avoidance, hypervigilance, anxiety, and depression. And the brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces who proudly serve the nation and risk their lives to protect our freedom deserve the investment of every possible resource to ensure their lasting physical, mental, and emotional well-being. And combat-related PTSD stress among our men and women in the armed forces is significantly pronounced, given that they are often exposed to highly traumatic events for weeks, months, and even years. And between 10% to 30% of service members will develop PTSD within a year of leaving combat, while others may not develop symptoms until years later. And despite its treatability, many cases of PTSD remain undiagnosed and untreated due to a lack of awareness of this condition and the persistent stigma associated with mental health conditions. And raising awareness of this condition is necessary to remove the stigma and to encourage those suffering to seek proper and timely treatment that may save their lives. And whereas all citizens suffering from PTSD deserve our consideration, and those who are affected by PTSD from wounds received while protecting our freedom deserve our respect and special honor. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Prescott does hereby proclaim the month of June 2022 as Post Traumatic Stress Disorder Month, to bring awareness to those with PTSD, and to encourage people to reach out to their fellow citizens to provide support and remove the stigma associated with this disorder. Mary Dillinger had to leave, so I was going to mail it to her, but...
I'm Jennifer Sigler, she asked me to come.
Oh, thank you. Well, good.
In her place, because she had to.
Okay. Well, here you go. And would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much. My name's Dr. Jennifer Sigler, and I'm one of the clinical psychologists on the PTSD clinical team at the Prescott VA. I'm just down the road here. And so I wanted to thank all of you for having this proclamation. I think it's such an important, important issue that we're bringing to the community. I think Prescott is very supportive of our veterans and our service members, as well as other individuals in the community that might be experiencing PTSD. But this month actually started in honor of Staff Sergeant Joseph Beal, who served two combat deployments in Iraq before developing symptoms of PTSD, and then subsequently dying by suicide. And his family had the initial PTSD Awareness Day, which is June 27th, on his birthday, starting in 2014 to honor him. So I think any way that we can, as a community, honor not only that individual, but all of our veterans and service members that are experiencing PTSD is such an important thing. So I just wanted to let everybody know that, you know, at the VA here in Prescott, we have a specialty team that offers individual psychotherapy, group psychotherapy, medication management, and other holistic approaches for our veterans. And it might be very difficult to ask for help, but we are here. And for the month of June, we're having a lot of different awareness events. We're so appreciative of you guys here being willing to do this. We also had a PTSD Awareness Walk, where we had over 40 individuals come, including 25 veterans that received information and services. We're also doing a PTSD Awareness Video that Mayor Good was willing to be supportive, and so thank you for that. And any way that we could spread the word, we just want to say thank you so much, and it's such an honor to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, I'm up next with the proclamation regarding Flag Day. Very often, when we have a proclamation, there's a specific organization that's here to receive the proclamation. Is there one for Flag Day? Okay, this is for all of us. Here we go. There are five "whereas" es here, so you can count them. When you hear the fifth one, you'll know we're getting close to the end. Whereas, Old Glory, the first distinctive American flag was born in June, and each year, we reflect on the history and meaning of our flag. And whereas, on Flag Day and during National Flag Week, let us remember with devotion our nation's flag. And remember, it is the flag of independence and freedom that flew at Yorktown, the flag of the United Nation that flew at Appomattox, and the flag of courage the United States Marines raised on Mount Suribachi. And whereas, the American flag symbolizes the strength, honor, ideals, and national purpose of our nation, and helps us remember the values of our republic and the valor of the men and women in uniform who have defended our nation and advanced the cause of world freedom. And whereas, as we raise our flag, we stand and salute and place our hands over our hearts, let us renew our sacred pledge that we will forever remain, quote, "one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all," unquote. And whereas, Congress by joint resolution approved on August 3rd, 1949, designated June 14th of each year as Flag Day and the week beginning June 12th through 18th, 2022, as National Flag Week, in commemoration of the adoption of the Stars and Stripes as the official flag of the United States by the Continental Congress on June 14th, 1777. Now, therefore, the City of Prescott does hereby direct that the flag of the United States be displayed on all city buildings on June 14th, 2022, and call upon the citizens of the City of Prescott to observe that day with appropriate ceremonies designed to honor our national flag. That's our proclamation for National Flag Day and National Flag Week. Thank you.
I usually get picked for this day because I got PTSD. I wear flags every day on my lapels, and I'm certainly a big fan of Junior Bonner. And let's keep in mind that PTSD is a syndrome. It's a range of conditions, not necessarily all negative. It's now being used to describe various traumatic events that people experience over the course of their lives that need to be recognized and dealt with, and they can be used in a very motivating and positive way, and not necessarily always in a negative way. For the most part, our veterans who came back and were diagnosed with PTSD were usually stigmatized from that, and I think that was a major disservice to their service. With that being said, I'll also mention the fact that today, June 14th, 1775, was also the birthday of the United States Army. So I got that going for me over here, and over here, and over there. So we were the first branch of service to be actually created, although some people say the National Guard was, but that's up to dispute. So this is Proclamation, Junior Bonner Day. Whereas, in 19... and we only have five "whereas"s too. Whereas, in 1971, the City of Prescott supported the local filming of the rodeo film Junior Bonner. And whereas, the City of Prescott supported the positive economic return such a film would have on the city, assisting in the logistic and artistic needs of the film's production. And whereas, the successful film brought national recognition to the City of Prescott. Whereas, the year 2022 is the 50th anniversary of the worldwide release of the film. And whereas, the City of Prescott enthusiastically supports the celebration of the film's release and the positive impact it has had on the city. Now, therefore, I feel good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, Arizona, in recognition of this important occasion, to hereby proclaim the week of April 27th to July 4th, 2022, as Junior Bonner Week. So let's have a big round of a hand for Junior Bonner. All right, you Junior Bonner fans, now's your chance. I have somebody on this side. Totally out of balance here. All right, who's going to make our comments? Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. As you know, and have looked around town, you see indications that this is, in fact, the beginning of Junior Bonner Week officially delegated or proclaimed today. We thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stuart Rosebrook, one of our board members, was unable to be here today, but his dad wrote the Junior Bonner story. And so we're disappointed that he can't be here. And one of our other board members, Bill Pierce, also couldn't attend today. Bill was the local contact for the Prescott location of the film. He was the manager for the film here in town. He was the local Film Commission representative, president of the Yavapai County Fair Association at that time, 50 years ago, and chair of the J.C.'s Rodeo Committee. Bill was active in this community and was, according to Stuart, his dad said, "Bill's the one that brought it here to Prescott." So we're glad that he's part of our organization now, and we hope everyone takes advantage of all the opportunities available to you around the Junior Bonner Celebration, whether it's the parade, or the rodeo, or the events going on at Charlotte Hall Museum, at our Western Heritage Center. Please take advantage of them and join us in celebrating this honor. Thank you.
This is a very special time.
And excuse me, would there be a rodeo if George Ruffner hadn't helped start it in 1888? And Lester Ruffner, my grandfather, would have written a lot of the rules that are still used today? Just saying, sir.
I expect you would be saying...
When he suggested this 50th anniversary thing a couple of years ago, actually, we were talking about, at the center, having one for the 50th anniversary of the making of the film. Of course, COVID took care of that, so we moved it to this year. And this is for the release of the movie. And we had no idea, when we made this suggestion to Stuart, probably over a year ago, that it would turn out to be this big of a deal. We chaired the committee with the rodeo, the City of Prescott, the Chamber, the Palace, Pippin Museum, Charlotte Hall Museum, and a couple hotels. I think that's it. Anyway, it's going to be a great time here around the 4th of July.
All right, that moves us to the open call to the public.
It does. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement, and residents may comment and address council regarding matters not included on the posted agenda during our call to the public. Members of the public who wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total. I only have one card at this time, and it is from Janet Russell.
Good afternoon. My name is Janet Russell. My husband and I live in the Kingswood area. It's a very pine-treeted area, for those of you who may not be familiar with the area, which is adjacent to the National Forest. I'm here today because I'm concerned about a decision that the Waste Management Department made earlier this spring, and I'm hopefully, by being here now, they will not make the same decision for next spring. In years past, Waste Management has held a bulk spring pickup of yard waste, usually around the first or second week of April. For whatever reason, a decision was made not to do that this spring, but to move it to September. My neighbors and I did not realize this pickup had been changed, partly because the information on their webpages had not been updated and reflected last year's dates. We realized this when I made phone calls in April to find out why they had not been by. After my phone call, the information on the site was taken down, and I was given the new information. As I stated earlier, we live in an area with lots of pine trees. This year, one of our neighbors and ourselves had over 65 large, 55-gallon bags of yard waste, ready to be picked up. There have been previous years when we fed over 80 bags. If the city does not come, how are we supposed to get rid of these? As Waste Management plans for next year, I hope serious consideration will be given to reinstating the spring pickup. After the long winter, the yards are filled with pine needles that have fallen. I can't imagine waiting all summer to get rid of these. Pick a week. If it isn't feasible to do the entire city, place info on the web and water bills that people could call for a pickup. I seriously doubt that everybody has the issues that we do, because they don't live in a treeed area. As we are all aware, we have been in a severe drought for years, increasing our danger for a wildfire. My husband is in charge of our neighborhood firewise efforts. He meets monthly with PAWIC, which is the Prescott Area Wildland Urban Interface Commission, which is comprised of federal, state, county, and city agencies' representatives, working together with volunteers and community leaders whose goal is to mitigate the threat of wildfires. Any resources a city can provide to promote a firewise community is much needed to clean up the properties. And if there's any doubt, the current fires in the Flagstaff area reinforce this idea. Currently, our rainfall is severely lacking. The Yavapai Flood Control District Thumbute Tank has a reading of 1.54 inches of rain as of June 12th. By the end of June, we should have five inches of rain. And our average rainfall is 16 inches of rain, so as you can see, we're way behind. We have serious fire risk issues. Cleanup is paramount to protecting our community. In conclusion, don't get me wrong, I think having a fall pickup is great, but not in lieu a spring pickup, and certainly not as early as September. Most of the pine needles are still falling well until October and early November. Thank you for your time and allowing me to express my concerns, and hopefully, you will have some input with the Waste Manage Department to rethink some of these issues. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor. That's all.
All right, that'll conclude it for our call to the public. We move on to the consent agenda. Does any member of the council wish to pull an item from consent?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull Item A.
Item A. All right, then I'll entertain a motion for Items B through I.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 9B through 9I.
Second. First and a second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor Protem, 9A, please.
Thank you. It's the minutes, and I believe I have a correction, but that's the reason why I'm bringing it up, just to make sure that the record is straight. It's on agenda, page 17 and page 10 of the minutes.
I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, which minutes?
Which minutes?
There were four minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Four different sets of minutes.
The FY '23 budget.
The budget workshop from May 17th?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you.
And that was page 17.
Page 17 of the agenda and page 10 of the minutes.
What's your revision?
It's in the first paragraph under Water Capital Projects. I believe in Mr. Woodfield's, the budget director's, presentation, he mentioned Phase 1 and Phase 2 water projects. Each one was $38,850.
Eight million.
I'm sorry, you're correct. Thirty-eight million, eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and that it was going to be funded by WIFIL loans. And I just wanted to make sure the record reflected that there was going to be a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 for a total of $77.7 million.
Okay, you can make that addition?
Thank you.
Any other changes?
That'll do it.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for that.
Mayor, I move Consent Agenda A be approved. Second.
Approved as amended.
Yes, as amended.
Approved as amended.
Passes 7-0.
All right, we'll move on to liquor licenses.
Public hearing in consideration for a new Series 14 Club Liquor License application from Teresa June Rose, applicant for Fraternal Order of Eagles, location 530 South Montezuma Street. The application fees have been paid, the signs have been posted for the required 20 days, and staff has reviewed the applications and determined that they're in compliance. No public comments have been received.
Is the applicant in the room?
I don't believe she's here.
Well, come on down and tell us about your new location. Been a lot of speculation over the last few years about your ability to land on your feet.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, my name's Dr. Elizabeth Frost. I am a trustee for the Fraternal Order of Eagles and a member of the area as well. I have been with the Eagles now for about a year and a half. I came on just as we were making this switch. We are financially stable, contrary to popular belief. We have been looking for a new nest, if you will. We have solidified a home at 530 South Montezuma Street, right up the street here, and we have started some construction. We've been working with the city to get permits, and that's what brings us here today, to get our liquor license. The building that we have solidified is a much smaller club. We have an occupancy certificate that will be included with all the work that we've been doing of 39. So as you can see, it is a much smaller location than our location at 218 Cortez Street.
Well, I suppose it's not necessarily quality, it's quantity, or maybe it is quality.
It's the quality, yes. I'd also like to add, if I may, while the time that we have been quote-unquote "dark", our organization has still been active. We have been still meeting on a bimonthly basis, or biweekly basis, I apologize. Trustees have been meeting weekly throughout the past year. So our organization has continued on. We've been using various businesses throughout the town that we are very grateful have opened our doors, so we do appreciate that.
Well, I'm sure everyone agrees with me that having the Fraternal Order of Eagles back in the saddle, so to speak, is a great thing to have. It's been available as a local consulting location for quite a few years, and having the members of the Eagles being able to continue to consult in an effective manner is much needed.
Thank you.
So congratulations and good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
And I believe there's some city council members that are members, and past city council members.
Absolutely.
I've heard that rumor as well. Any comments or concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license number 196366 for a new Series 14 Club Liquor License application for Fraternal Order of Eagles, location 530 South Montezuma Street.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
That concludes item 10. All right, we'll move on to our regular agenda, item 11, our legislative update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tyler Goodman with the City Manager's Office, here with another riveting legislative update. Fortunately, I do have more information this time. Some things have changed in the past two weeks, and I expect a lot more will change in the next two weeks, by the time I present to you again. The budget discussions are continuing, but there has been some information that was leaked, I guess you could call it. But at this time, it's still unknown if there's support for that information that has been shared or leaked, but we'll go through some of these things. It is expected, though, that by next Monday, in the week of June 20th, they will have some official movement, some votes, some floor action on the budget. And I think this week, it's a lot of negotiating to get these numbers either up or down. What has been released shows a $15.1 billion spending plan. Included in that is $1 billion into water infrastructure, it pays down $1 billion in debt and pension liability, and allocates another $425 million to the state's rainy day fund. Again, there's some information there, but these numbers could change by the time we see a final budget. Good news for us, the $1 million in hotshot funding is included. Of course, that's in the base budget, so it's not something that has to be negotiated every year. If my memory serves me correctly, this is the sixth of seven $1 million payments, so next year would be the final of the seven million received. And of course, that helps pay down our liability and can help retire 443 even that much sooner, so that's great. Other than that, there has not been a lot of movement on bills. One, however, did have some movement, Senate Bill 1082 or 1082. This was the ASRS, the Arizona State Retirement System employer contribution, and allowing us to make some prepayments. It failed in the House 14 to 31. And I just saw that information yesterday, so I'm still inquiring as to why the loss of support, because it passed out of the Senate pretty much unopposed, and then it passed out of its House Committee unopposed. So I'll be getting some information on why that happened, or if it's going to be perhaps negotiated and come back up. There is a possibility of that, but I'll find that information out.
Do you have the partisan voting list on that?
I can certainly get that, yes, I'll share that with you. That bill would have helped us going forward, to give us some options. There's a guaranteed earnings rate on prepayments for ASRS, which would have been beneficial to us and other cities and towns, so hopefully that's not the end of it. Maybe this year it might be, but it could come back next year, perhaps. But I'll share some more information on that.
That's interesting.
Otherwise, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Nothing new on advancing of the Arizona Water Authority?
Nothing new. It's still being negotiated with the governor, I believe, and it really is part of the budget discussions, so nothing official that we've received on that.
We are on day what?
We are on day, I believe it's 153 or 54, and they're supposed to adjourn around a day 100.
What's the deadline?
The deadline to adjourn, well, the deadline was April 9th or 19th, I believe, the 100th day, but as far as getting a budget done, it's June 30th.
June 30th, right.
Yeah, unless they want a government shutdown, which at this rate could be likely, so...
So tell us about the budget manipulations going on.
Well, of course, with the information released, it was quite a lengthy document that was released, but members of the House, some went more for education, some went more for different aspects of infrastructure. So there's a lot of back and forth going on, and of course, you know that the margins, the partisan margins in each chamber are slim, so each member has a lot of ability to negotiate just for their vote. And that's really why it's taking this much longer, because the margins are so slim on any given vote.
So we're still dealing with three budgets, the governor's budget, the state budget, and the Senate budget.
Yes, and they all have to be reconciled enough where there's the votes to approve it.
Well, we'll see how that develops.
I guess we will.
What do you think the likelihood of getting an actual agreement is, or is it much more likely we'll end up with a skinny budget like we did last year?
That is a possibility. That's been thrown around quite a bit in the past month or so. What I've heard is that next week, they're really going to make a push to get the votes, to get it out of the chambers and get it to the governor. They don't want a government shutdown, and I think that there's enough on the table. There's, it's a problem, it's more so a problem when you have this much revenue and money to throw around, and that's where the negotiations come in, but they're going to make a hard push next week to get it done.
Councilman Shishka.
Thanks, Mayor.
Tyler, if there is an unfortunate shutdown, what's the biggest effect on Prescott city government?
That's a great question. I have, I've not experienced that since I've been here, working for the city. I don't, I don't know if the city would truly feel any dramatic impacts, and if somebody knows better than I do, please, please correct me, but it's probably mostly those state-level services, and of course, they don't take away any, oh, good, our finance director, they don't take away any of the critical, you know, law enforcement or any of those things, but Mark, you can fix it.
Yeah, absolutely. The shutdowns are always nonessential-type services, which, why do they exist? Just they're nonessential. But, yeah, it doesn't really have any local impact too much on us, the few times it's happened.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, is that primary because we're a charged city?
No, it's primarily because the things they shut down are more the service counters and stuff in the Phoenix area and that kind of stuff. Department of Revenue still operates, still sends out the revenues to us, and DPS is still operating and all those type of things.
Would we still get the additional shared revenue that we got last year over the year before? I think last year we got 17.7 versus 15 the prior year.
I'm sorry, I mean, our shared revenues are dependent on whatever is in the budget. I guess, we went over those in the budget workshop. Which specific one are you referring to?
Well, there was agreement last year.
Oh, the percentage on the...
Percentage.
Oh, the income tax.
Yeah, on the income tax. When does that start? That is until next year?
Correct, next fiscal year.
Next fiscal year, that percentage goes up for 24.
All right, so it's still, it's still out there in the hope category.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you, Tyler, and I have one question, maybe after the meeting, I'd like to ask you.
Sure, absolutely.
All right, I guess that's it for legislative update. Now move on to approving transfer of certain fiscal year 2022 budget appropriations by adopting Resolution 2022-1823.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Always a pleasure to be here. Mark Woodfield, Budget and Finance Director. Throughout the year in a budget, you have budget appropriation that are in various areas, and we do contingencies for various things. As we go through the year and things happen, like we bought the W parcel at the airport, it'll come to council, and we will say in the memo, we will generally say publicly, this isn't, wasn't budgeted, but there's capacity in the contingency. And then, once a year, we bring all those things that we've talked about all year into one resolution to move those contingencies around. So that's what we have here. I mean, we can run through the list real quick. The W parcel, again, 9.9 million, wasn't budgeted, but there was, it was thought of in a contingency. As in this year's budget, we had contingencies. We had additional payments to the internal loan for City Hall. There was some available budget there, but we did make multiple additional payments on those.
Is this $500,000? Was that from the McCormick Street sale?
Again, we made payments well above that. We made the 1.6 for the sale of a portion of the W parcel. We did the $600,000, I'm thinking, from the sale of the animal control. And then the McCormick Street, whenever that closes, that'll go as well, but that won't close until next year.
Okay.
But this was just additional appropriation that was needed. Council approved additional lighting for the courthouse, additional funding for the courthouse lighting, and also additional marketing, the bed tax. Again, that was above the budget appropriation, again, just a movement of appropriation. All these things are not actual cash. Some unanticipated grants and trusts that we got, some minor ones. There was, of course, the use of this Lufre, the state and local fiscal recovery funds, which was the subset of the ARPA program, when we used that to cover shortfall revenues, as we discussed in February. Again, just moving it from the, from the non-departmental contingency into the individual departments where those expenses were. PSPRS dedicated sales tax funds came in higher than projected, always good news, but we need appropriation, be able to send that down to the PSPRS trust. And then a golf course had additional activity in the maintenance area that wasn't anticipated, and that was just a movement from the other side of the golf course, a non-departmental Billy Casper budget. And again, that is related to additional activity out there, additional needs in the maintenance. Again, none of these are cash, it's all just budget appropriation. And then Fleet had additional activity related to repair the fleet, so there was additional appropriation needed there. Of course, revenues were also associated with that one. Those were the movements, and that's what this resolution does. Any questions?
Yes. I'd like to go back to the increased funding for the courthouse lighting and marketing. Of course, I support the courthouse lighting, it's a wonderful event and a big economic shot in the arm for the city, but I see it's 675.
That wasn't for the court, that was a combination of the courthouse lighting, additional amount, plus additional marketing that council approved. Council approved all these expenditures throughout the year.
Oh, okay, because I thought it was just...
No.
Do you know what portion that would be?
I don't have the details. If John is in here, I don't see John. I can definitely...
So it's not all just for the one event, the courthouse lighting?
No, no, it's for the courthouse lighting, as well as other marketing done through the bed tax fund to encourage tourism.
Okay, thank you.
John is here, if you... John, do you have the amount of the additional funding that went to the courthouse lighting?
Facebook is good, I can monitor the meeting from my office. The approved funding last year was $160,000 for the courthouse lighting.
And then the other amounts were related to additional marketing?
Additional marketing that Tourism Office did, looking at the fund balance availability, we took on additional campaigns that were offered to us through the Arizona Office of Tourism, to help kind of restart tourism post-COVID.
Okay, thank you very much.
Of course.
Are we still referring to the management at the golf courses, Billy Casper?
Probably not.
That was bought out by Trune Golf, and Trune was bought out by Indigo.
I think it's Indigo, yeah.
So I think it's now Indigo is our management firm.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Right? Billy Casper is a great golfer, I realize.
Mayor, are you ready for a motion on this?
I'm ready for a motion on this agenda memo.
Super. But I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2022-1823.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, please vote.
Passes 7-0. Adoption of Resolution Number 2022-184, adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year 2023 and setting the public hearing for the final budget expenditure limitation... and setting the public hearing for the final budget expenditure limitation and tax levies for the city of Prescott.
Thank you, Sarah. Mayor and Counsel Mark Woodfield, Budget and Finance Director. This is the tentative adoption. We went through the budget in some level of detail at the workshop. And again, it's been on the web, our website, in greater deal detail than that. The council started this process back in January with the council strategic workshop. We did mid-year workshops showing where we were at the 22 budget and some of the preliminary looks at the issues back in February. And then departments worked with city manager over the next couple of months to pull it together to the annual budget workshop, which was on the 17th. And again, those slides, the backup and additional detail has been on the web since probably the first part of May. Today is tentative consideration. These are the legal forms that are attached to the council agenda, which are being adopted or considered today. These set the maximum amount of the budget for next year. If through the public hearing, which happens on the 28th of June, council decides to lower that budget, they can lower that budget. If council decides to increase that budget, it's too bad, they cannot increase the budget. It sets the cap, it can only go down from here. With that, this is the budget as it stands, pretty much where it was. There's some, some minor adjustments. The environmental assessment was taken out. And there was a few other adjustments that were made, but pretty much the same amount that we had, a $281,220,203 budget for next year. Again, this includes, in addition to a $5 million grant contingency, which we have in each year budget to account for grants that we might receive, so that we can act on those. It has a $30,000 contingency contemplated as a possible debt issue if other projects that council is considering or looking at that aren't to a point of being, you know, discussed, whether that's land purchase in the airport layout plan, or if that's land related to the IGA for Glassford Hill, or if that's using, if it passes through the budget, the ASRS pre-payoff of, of our liability as ASRS, it just gives the council options. And again, it's to give you the ability to not to have to wait 18 months to do something. If you need to get money and you don't have a contingency in there, you have to cut other projects, stop water or wastewater projects to move those appropriations to wherever you need them to be. So with that, the action today, excuse me, I'm talking more than I like today. The action today sets the public hearing for the 28th for not only our budget, the 23 budget. It also sets the public hearing for the 23 alternative expenditure limitation and the 23 property tax level. And then, on a separate meeting after that public hearing, council will have a separate meeting where they will consider the final budget document. And then, on the 12th of July, we'll bring back the property tax levy. Again, we went into details on the amount of the levy and all that in the last meeting. I do have those 50 slides. If we want to run through them again, I would be glad to pull them up. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. First of all, concerning the Glassford Hill IGA. Back in February of 2020, Save the Dells went down with Noel Campbell, and I accompanied them. And we met with state legislatures, went to the committees and had hearings as to the formation and funding of a regional park. And the plan was to have the state appropriate the money. And now we've got the state Parks Department involved, which is a wonderful thing. And the latest I heard was that we were going to have the state appropriate the money to the Parks Department. And then they were going to turn around and purchase the land from the state land department, that we weren't going to use funds from our, from our budget. So I think that we need to clarify that because it's, it's just too vague. We, it seems to me there was a plan in place, and this kind of clouds the, kind of clouds the issue for me with that $30 million kind of, well, we're just going to have it here. And we, it's not really earmarked for anything in particular specifically.
And again, if council wishes, they can pull the $30 million out. It's just a placeholder. It gives you the ability to do things that might come up. If council doesn't want that ability, doesn't want to be able to move forward on projects that might come up or needs until fiscal year 24, we can pull it out. It's, it's a council decision.
Okay.
And again, I believe we do have an IGA that spells out how that, those transactions are going to happen for the Glassford Hill thing.
I also have another concern about the Whiffle loan for the water infrastructure pump station project. When it was first presented last year, it was a $200,000 design project on the consent agenda. And I pulled it. And Mr. Dathis, the Public Works Director at the time, clarified that it was a design for a project that was going to cost, upon my questioning, approximately $30 million. And then I found out with your presentation that it was only going to be for Phase 1, that it's 38.8 million times 2, Phase 1 and Phase 2. And I have some concerns. In 2009, the citizens passed the Taxpayer Protection Initiative, Prop 401. It was passed by a 2 to 1 margin. And projects over 40 million, but now with the CPI, it's 50 million, the last I heard. They need to be brought to the voters, put on the ballot. And the Arizona Constitution guarantees the right to vote on big public debt. And I just need more information about this project. I would like to see a separate study session on it with more details as to exactly, because initially, in my packet, it said this project was going to be for Deepwell Ranch. And then it was clarified later on that it was going to be for both Deepwell Ranch, everything west of 89, and includes the city. And this is a really big expenditure, and it's going to be paid for with a Whiffle loan. And I just think that the public needs more transparency on this big of an expenditure.
And, you know, definitely, if it's council's desire, we can do a workshop and go through that. We have done some workshops on this project and talked about it. And, I mean, this project's been going for several years now. And we have done a few workshops, but we could do another one, and Public Works could bring it out and lay out the project again and why it's important. As far as meeting the charter requirements, it does not meet that charter requirement because there are exclusions in that requirement, which include the replacement of equipment and also state required statutory federal or state required changes. And this meets both of those. We're replacing the pump station and distribution facility in Chino. It's getting moved to a position on Deepwell, which might be where some of the confusion is coming from. It's located there. But it's where it can pull water from our Chino Valley facility, as well as our airport pump facility, to serve the whole Prescott area more efficiently, more effectively, without having high pressures from the Chino facility. But again, we can do another workshop if it's council's desire to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mark, I think that probably would be appropriate, even though this particular project has been in the works for several years now. The fact that it is located within the overall Deepwell Ranch development and Proposition 401 going way, way back. Many, many residents now were not residents when those concerns were voiced and were put in part of the city charter. So I think clarifying that it is, in fact, being done for the broad benefit of the community. And it's not subject to the restrictions that 401 imposes on certain strict development agreements, whether they're more for residential development than infrastructure, I think would be valuable to have that restated.
Mayor. $30 million contingency with a bond issuance. I have some reservations. I was taken today by the gentleman Kurt from RBC Capital Markets.
Yes.
He, he made the comment in our study session that when it comes to debt services, the community should do so with, and I wrote down his words because I thought it was important, eyes wide open. And I, I share similar concerns to what Mayor Protem Rusin is saying about understanding that 30 million bond contingency. It seems like an awful lot of money to me. And it seems like we're going to be, you know, as you have been careful to point out when it comes to debt servicing, and I appreciate your concern around this, that debt issuance is a way of spending, is a way of getting the money, but it's not a way of paying for it, right? It's not a financing option unless, of course, we use a general obligation bond. Then it's slightly different. And I appreciated the presentation today. But I just, I personally, from where I sit, I'd like to see if there's a way that makes sense to drop that contingency and to be a little bit skinnier on it. That would be my, my desire.
Again, that is obviously something council can do. They can remove it altogether. It will prevent you from moving on any big projects that have not been outlined in the budget, which is not the end of the world, probably. And again, today, we're adopting the tentative budget. So if that's a change council wants to make for the final budget, we can do that so that your final budget will not include that level of contingency. It can include a lesser level or no level, if you don't want any.
Yeah, I'll make a comment on that as well, being part of the, the IGA group that's been trying to put together this regional park proposal. It's taken us forever, or damn near forever, to be able to get a qualified appraiser to come up and just give us an appraised number on how much an acre of extinct volcano on the top of Glassford Hill is worth. Now, apparently, this qualified appraiser, when his initial examination of it, which was based upon a two-dimensional map, indicated that that should be developable to the tune of 12,000 or 15,000 dollars. I didn't ask him if he had any bridges to sell me, but I think they probably would have fell in the same category. When we finally were able to get this person to actually show up on site and look at some of these locations, then the appraised value dropped precipitously. But we needed a number. We needed an appraised number to be able to present to the, to the state to have some ability, to have some financial allocation for that project. So that project not only has property that the city owns, that the county owns, that the Prescott Valley owns, that the State Land Trust owns, that the State Department of Park Recreation owns. And if anybody's watching any of the developments of the State Land Trust over the last few years, they are very reluctant to sell anything. And if they do sell anything, it's got to be an entire section, minimum. And that's 160 acres. So the fact that the State Land Trust Department, all of a sudden, has gotten cooperative, which may have something to do with the fact that the director of the State Land Trust serves at the?
Pleasure.
Pleasure of the, of the, of the governor, and the governor is termed out. Maybe that director has decided to get more reasonable. We've recently, just within the last week, received a much more accurate appraisal that would dramatically reduce the amount of money we would potentially have to borrow for our portion of those three entities that are involved in trying to acquire this land. So there may be a legitimate reason for that, for a loan for that, for reducing the contingency amount put into our budget. But I think a lot of people continue to misunderstand that if we don't budget something, and even if we get a grant, a 95 to 1 grant, we come up with a 5%, we can't even spend the 5% because it was never budgeted. So we have to have some reasonable expectation of budgeting should we get funding over the course of that fiscal year, whether it's through grants or other sources. That allows us to move forward with a project because we budgeted it. If we don't put anything in there and all of a sudden we get a $3 million grant, guess what? We can't spend it. We can't use it because we didn't budget for it. So that's a kind of a unique budgetary requirement that we have to build into our budgets to make sure that if the best-case scenario does, in fact, occur, we're able to take advantage of it. Councilman Tenny.
I appreciate your words there, Mayor. You addressed some of my concerns just now. Just clarification question for Mark, and mostly for the public, not even for myself at this point. But if we do put a contingency amount of any kind, whether it's $3 or $30 million, does that require the council to spend that money?
Definitely not. And it doesn't require us to issue a bond for 30 million. If we end up needing 5 million and we need to issue a bond, we issue a $5 million bond.
So just to clarify, that locks us into nothing. It simply gives us flexibility for some of these?
It gives you the possibility to address things that council is?
Including the use of grant funding that in no way would come out of our?
Grant funding, if somebody gives us money to build a library in North Prescott, we have to have that budget. Even though the cash isn't coming from us, we still have to have appropriation to spend it.
That's fantastic. I appreciate that clarification. I appreciate Mayor Protem Rusin going down with her contingency to contingent to the capital and talking about conceptually state funding for a portion of this park. That's fantastic. But as we've just heard from Tyler, absolutely nothing is in stone about the budget, even things that are super high priorities on the minds of a number of legislators, not just something that sounds good to two or three legislators. So that's certainly not a thing we can take to the bank at this point. I appreciate that we've got a?
And I think an additional point that the mayor added that I think is really important is that number is tied to appraisals that have just happened or appraisals that haven't happened yet. If you have to purchase land and you don't know how much money it is and you don't have the capacity to purchase it, you're not buying it.
Sounds to me like it would be foolish to eliminate this contingency.
Elimination, yes. If you want to tweak with it, I think that's fine.
There's no harm in having it. What the level's at?
Mark, is there, is there a specific advantage you can think of to us reducing the contingency amount?
It's totally up to council.
Is there a specific advantage you can think of to us reducing that?
It may make the public feel more comfortable, might make you guys feel more comfortable. Hopefully, it won't, it won't affect whatever you need to do. Again, this contingency isn't really put in there for staff.
Sure.
It's put in there for council if something comes up that staff hasn't brought forward. I mean, staff has brought forward what we know about. So this is other things that council is working on.
So just to clarify, I'm hearing that there's, there's no specific advantage to reducing it, but there are potential specific disadvantages to reducing it?
Yeah, I mean, there could be advantages as far as the public's concerned, leaving them at some level or council's concerned. And again, it can be whatever council wants it to be.
Sure.
But it can limit you if you guys decide you need to do something.
Very good. I appreciate that.
Mayor Protem.
I have one more question. We haven't had a new fire station since 1993, and there's been a discussion that we probably could use three of them. Has, is there any movement as towards funding or?
Since what we discussed at the budget workshop on the 17th?
Yeah.
I mean, we talked about the stations. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, could you refresh my memory?
I don't know if I, are the slides on here?
Just whatever you sent over.
I meant from the seventeenth.
From the seventeenth? No, they're not, because I delete them after we're done with them.
So, yes, we have two stations, brand new, that are proposed for the northern Prescott area and a relocation of Station Seventy-Three. The recommendation was, in the immediacy, to look at a parcel of land in the Granite Hills area to get ahead of the escalating property prices, because that's a private property piece that we would have to purchase, and then leveraging land that we already own in city parks or with a partnership with the university for the other land, and then looking at development costs later. But again, it is in the budget package that we discussed during the budget workshop, and none of that has changed at this point.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well, very good. If there are no other concerns, I'll entertain a motion. Now, are we going to adopt this as the tentative budget, or are we going to potentially modify the tentative budget?
Whichever you want to do.
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number two zero two-two dash one eight two-four. Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Passes seven-zero.
Ashes passes six-zero. I think there's a legitimate reason to modify the budget.
And again, we can modify the budget at the final budget adoption. It can go down. So on June twenty-eighth, you can, council can reduce the budget to whatever you want it to be.
In that case, I'll vote yes.
Okay. So seven-zero.
Oh, dear.
Adoption of ordinance number two zero two-two dash one seven eight nine, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title Eight, Chapter Eight dash Two, City Right-of-Way, and adding new sections, eight dash two dash ten, construction and relocation of facilities, eight dash two dash eleven, pavement cut-ins in new streets, eight dash two dash twelve, pavement restoration fee, eight dash two dash thirteen, inspection of work, eight dash two dash fourteen, cease and desist orders, and adding severance and penalty provisions, and resolution number two zero two-two dash one eight zero nine, amending Prescott City Code, Chapter Eight dash Two, Right-of-Way, and adding pavement restoration fees.
That was a lot. Good afternoon, Gwen Rowich, Deputy Public Works Director. This item is not new to council. We discussed it in work study earlier this year, possible amendment to City Code, Chapter Eight dash Two, which specifically has to do with rights of way. Today, I'm just going to hit some of the highlights of the changes to the code, not every change, although the complete document is in your packet. There are several reasons why city staff brought this amendment in front of you. Some of those stemmed from failure to perform, lack of formal guidelines, and after our work study session in March, we developed a stakeholder group, and we met with that stakeholder group on three separate occasions, and I think we have a better document for having done that. One of the biggest changes to the code has to do with our interface with franchise utilities in the public right-of-way that are required when they need to do public improvements. The design performance criteria was a huge part of the changes here, adding some levels of accountability, not only on the franchise utility part, but also on the city's part to perform, so that projects can continue to move forward through the process. One of the biggest changes is the, during the design phase of a project, that the franchise utility has thirty days to respond to us with existing utility maps and where their utilities are located. And then, within sixty days of notice from the city, they need to tell us whether they are going to require changes or replacement or relocation of those facilities, whether that will be required or not required. That's a huge part of the city process as we develop plans. Somewhere along the sixty percent design phase is when we determine the feasibility of the project and the extent of additional work, including the relocation of facilities that needs to take place. One of the biggest changes to the document from the original that you saw in the study session is the ninety-day notification or mutually agreed-upon timeframe for the final design to occur. And part of that new language about the mutually agreed-upon timeframe stemmed from our conversations with the franchise utilities and the city, understanding what their processes are within their own companies to bring projects forward for not only approval of their design, but approval for budgeting of their projects. They also have timelines that they must follow. And so the mutually agreed-upon timeframe is the preferred method, and the fallback is ninety days. So if we cannot mutually agree on a timeframe, then they have ninety days to complete the design in order to move a project forward to construction. In the construction performance criteria part of the code change, again, we added some language regarding that they commence construction within sixty days or mutually agreed-upon timeframe. Again, sometimes it takes the city, we don't always, aren't always able to bid our projects right away. We have other things that we have to do as well, and so we added the same language We also have some language in here regarding mutually agreed-upon completion dates, how we will deal with delays in projects, including weather days. And the most important part of this change is a monetary penalty to franchise utilities when they do not perform within the timeframes that they are required to. City contract language, city contracts have language in them that call for penalties that can be paid to the contractor if the city fails to perform our due diligence as part of the contractual agreement. So those monetary penalties would be passed on to the franchise utility if they are the cause of the delay. So what is a new street? We added some definitions to the code that define what a new street is. Street cuts on any street that is basically brand-new up to two years of age can only be cut in the following cases: when there's an emergency that endangers life or property, if it's an interruption of an essential utility service, or if there is no other feasible means of providing an existing service. Those are the only exceptions to someone requesting to cut a city street that is less than two years old. Any street cut that we allow up to five years, the applicant would be required to mill and overlay a full lane width, as well as repair any damage to sidewalk, curb, or gutter. And the pavement street cut fee, which is new, would apply. So city staff posted the proposed pavement restoration fee on the city website back in December of 2021. It's been on the site for close to seven months now. If you cut a street that's zero to one-year-old and the area is less than two hundred square yards, then you would pay eighteen hundred dollars plus twenty dollars a square yard. And the fee goes down from there up to five years of age for any pavement. And the reason we try to discourage the cutting of new pavement, we consider anything less than five years to be new, is because it shortens the life of the pavement in its entirety. Water penetration is not a friend when it comes to pavement. Another key component of the change, this is new language, we added language for cease and desist orders. Sometimes, folks go out there and they just start doing what they want to do, and they don't come in and they don't get a permit, they don't have good proper traffic control up, it's not safe for them to be in the right-of-way where there are cars, pedestrians don't know which way to go, they might block ADA access, things like that. So we need some authority to ask people to cease and desist what they're doing and remove from the area until they get proper permits and have proper traffic control in place. So that's a key change to the code. One of the other key components was abandoning public utilities. You know, if we could look under the ground, it's like a ghost town under there, right? All kinds of things that, once we don't use them anymore, a lot of times, it's simpler to leave them than to remove them. So when we were talking about this with the franchise utilities especially, we tried to come up with criteria on when it wouldn't really be feasible to remove utilities. And so we have a list of exemptions here. If the removal would cause a disruption to traffic or a threat to public safety, if the cost to remove it exceeds the public benefit, if there are no conflicts with future city improvements, or if they're cutting pavements that's less than five years old. Addition to that, if utilities were to be abandoned underground, the owner of that infrastructure would still be required to map it and locate it through Blue Stake, Arizona Blue Stake. So even abandoned utilities must be Blue Staked when a Blue Stake is called for. They would also be required to continue to maintain minimum separations from other infrastructure and minimize conflicts with city projects. If there was a conflict, then the utility would have to pay for the removal. We also have language in the code about non-public utility abandonments. If someone starts a project in the right-of-way and more than a hundred and eighty days go by after the permit expires, then the city can go out and remove that equipment, facilities, or other things left in the right-of-way. That's the end of my summary. I'm happy to answer questions. I would like to add that the stakeholders, APS, Unisource, Sandy Griffiths with YCCA, were all very highly complimentary of the process, that they got to have input, and again, staff thinks we have a better product for having sought their input and their guidance on their processes. And I know a few of them are in the audience here today. I know Ms. Sandy's here. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Gwen, just for the benefit of the new council members, like, two minutes of how we got to this point and why this became important. The mayor could do that, too, if you want.
We had a public capital project where we were waiting for a public utility to relocate their existing utilities, and for a number of reasons, we weren't the highest priority. And we had a contractor actually start a construction project, and we had to pull that contractor off of the job. And a good period of time went by before we were able to bring them back onto the job, and the city incurred penalties from the contractor, as I was speaking about earlier, because of the little contract language. So it was that that kind of propelled us to the next level. I will say that the whole basis of this co-change is to improve communications. If we're talking to public utilities in the design phase and even before the design phase about what's coming up, you know, we had extensive discussions with them about our five-year capital plan is on our website. We can send it to them every year as we update it so they can see what projects are coming. We don't just pick surprises. I mean, we're government, we plan ahead, we have, we have to plan, or otherwise, Mark will kill us all, you know, it's part of that extra money we got to find. So it's not a secret. So we had some pretty good dialogue with them about how we can give them information further in advance so they can plan within their own organizations to meet our needs. And they, one of the commenters said to me, she said, you know, I'm dealing with another community right now, and they aren't nearly as nice, or having the same kind of effective communication that we're having with you, so thank you very much. I just wanted to share that.
Well, I think if we take the time to plan with our franchisees so that reasonable decisions and accommodations are made, then we end up sounding a lot nicer. But quite frankly, our franchise agreement was twenty-five years old, I believe, and it really was totally one-sided. So fortunately, we were able to realize that we had the opportunity for this franchise agreement to come up for renewal and be able to put in some very reasonable expectations into this renewal, because I'm sure our franchise holder wanted to hold that franchise for a lot of additional years. But being able to come up with some reasonable agreements about how their staff were deployed to projects such as the one we described that uncovered a real problem area, but they were working on something that was, in their mind, a much higher priority. But in the meantime, we had a big open pit there that was dangerous for the community, and of course, we were holding up our contractor to try to get the work done in a reasonable time, which he had a right to expect. So I think this is a good example of how, when we take a look at agreements and contracts, we put them together in a way that all the parties can feel that they have reasonable consideration and being able to provide good services that the public can rely on. So, Councilman Tenney.
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen, as always, excellent communication, great presentation. Thank you so much. We're getting close to my bedtime here, so just a really quick question. On street cuts, the exceptions, can you give me one quick example of a situation where no other feasible means of providing service would exist, and so we would allow an exception to that, and maybe then a non-exemple as well, something where someone might think, yeah, this falls under that heading, but it wouldn't?
So the best example I can give you is if, let's say, someone's private sewer line was broken or needed to be replaced. That's an essential service. So we would allow the street cut to take place, and they would simply pay the pavement restoration fee.
And can you think of a common situation that folks might approach your department and say, hey, you want to cut the pavement, and it wouldn't be allowed under this, or not? If you can't, off the top of your head, that's...
You know, we're a culture of yes, so I'm going to say I can't think of another example. But there may be.
I'm sure there would be, but I appreciate that you can't think of one off the top of your head. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good answer, Gwen.
I would also like to say that we're developing an interactive map for the city webpage, and I was hoping to have it for today, but we haven't quite got it there. But the interactive map will allow you to either type in a street name or zoom in onto the map, and the different time periods, zero to two years, two to three, and then three to five, will be different colors. So you can see, anyone will be able to see before they come in for a permit that their street will be affected by the pavement cut restoration fee.
Cool.
Thank you, Gwen. I have one question. Now, this ordinance does not affect the custom builder, just the basic contractor, home builder, if he needs to hook up a new house?
This affects all public streets. So if a new development is built, at the end of the construction of the public infrastructure, it's turned over to the city for warranty. So the first two years of that new construction, all repairs to the public infrastructure, including the pavement, are covered under warranty. And then after the first two years, then they would be subject to this code, like anyone else, for any public street.
Okay, because I was under the impression it was just for franchisees.
It's for anyone asking to cut the pavement.
Okay. All righty.
Yeah, when we originally started working on the franchise agreement, we wanted to make sure that it dovetailed and aligned with our city codes. So it was easy for us to reference them, and it was easy for the franchisees to know what the city codes were and how to comply with them. I would like to make a point. I would be tempted to vote a no against this, but quite frankly, this is long overdue. But I would suggest that anytime we make code changes, that the changes be highlighted in red, so that anybody looking at these proposed changes will understand what is being changed, what is being added, what is being deleted, what is being modified. We've run across a couple of state bills in the State House this year where that normal and expected process wasn't followed, and because it wasn't followed, there were some major, major problems that were generated because representatives voted for things thinking there were no changes when, in fact, there were very significant changes, but they hadn't put them in red. So please make that a standard way of presenting proposals to the council so that we know what is being proposed and can agree to that and not assume that what isn't in red isn't changing, when in this case, it is.
Completely reasonable request, and it transcends departments. We'll just have it done universally.
Okay. All right. Any other further questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Do you have a public comment, Mayor?
Public comment.
Sandy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, Sandy Griffiths, Yavapai County Contractors Association. If you recall back in March, you gave public... If you recall back in March, you gave Public Works the directive to go out and bring in a collaborative group of partners to go over this code. And I'm here to tell you that the experience was top-notch. We had three fantastic, popular Zoom meetings beyond popularity, from our franchise utilities to our A Generals, to our K.A. Duels, to my normal industry partners and YCCA. We participated with questions, comments, and it was a relatively seamless, very enjoyable process. And kudos to Gwen and your team for the management and how you controlled it, regulated it, and took all of us on with grace. So I applaud you for that. We need to process this. The industry has had their moment of glory, and this document, Gwen made a statement that she thinks it's a good working document. I'm here to tell you, Ms. Gwen, Mayor and Council, it's a fantastic, new working document, and you should all be so proud. The other thing that the industry involvement and the collaboration should show you is why it's so necessary and important to bring in your partners when you're considering making changes and looking at code changes, GES changes, any sort of thing that involves many multiples of partners. So in my mind and a lot of our other minds, this was an A-plus. And, Mr. Mayor, I truly hope that you do vote for this, regardless of the red, white, and black text.
You know, I appreciate red.
Now, I will say that our packages from Gwen during the process, we were black, red, and blue, and we could see, we knew what had been changed, and it was extremely easy to know where you came from. So...
Prove my point.
Yes, absolutely. So thank you, and again, to Gwen and Public Works. You're truly appreciated.
Awesome.
That's all, Mayor.
All right, then. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2022-1789.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
And I move to adopt resolution number 2022-1809.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero. Approval of resolution number 2022-1825, approving city contract number 2022-222, an intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County for the Pioneer Parkway and Commerce Drive Roundabout Intersection Improvement Project.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council. It's a pleasure to be with you this afternoon. My name is Ashley Kelch. I'm the Public Works Director. And what we have before you is a consideration of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Prescott and Yavapai County for construction of a proposed roundabout at the intersection of Commerce Drive and Pioneer Parkway. They approached us, and we had a work-study session on this, I think, a couple of months ago. And so I won't belabor the point. You've already been presented with the material for consideration. I will just briefly say that some of this is triggered by the Hidden Hills subdivision. They're coming in, and a traffic impact analysis has indicated that the developer of Hidden Hills needs to contribute towards his or her fair share of the intersection improvements. And so the trigger for that is the approval of the final plat for Phase Two, to answer the question that Councilman Montoya asked on Friday. And so we do have the ability to help defray the cost of this to the city by stipulating that the developer pay this share. And the exact dollar amount has yet to be determined, but we estimate that it'll be anywhere between half and two-thirds of what is being asked of the City of Prescott. And so last month, the bids were open for this project, and they came in lower than the engineer's estimate of cost. And so the bids came in around $3 million. Yavapai County has $2.2 million budgeted for this project, and they've reduced their ask from $1 million, which was in the work-study session, accordingly to $750,000. Now, why roundabout as opposed to traffic signal? Mainly for traffic safety reasons. This is on a downgrade as you go northeast on Pioneer Parkway. Traffic study has measured speeds that are in excess of what we feel is safe for a signalized intersection. There's a bit of a sight distance issue. As you head on, as you enter the intersection from Commerce Drive, there's a bit of a sight distance issue. A roundabout reduces injury collisions by 76%, and it reduces incapacitating injuries or deaths by 90%. So it's much safer. The roundabout will enhance ingress and egress from Pioneer Park, which is very nearby this intersection. And so this is a public policy decision by the council, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have. And Roger McCormick is the Deputy Public Works Director for Yavapai County. He's also here in the audience to help answer any questions. Schedule, that's one thing I failed to mention. If this project moves forward, then construction would start after Independence Day and be concluded by the end of December of this year.
Wow.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanna make sure I understood what you said. So I'll be brief about this, but it sounds like as much as half to two-thirds of the cost that we're approving today will actually be fitted by the developer.
That is accurate.
Okay. That's great to hear. Thank you.
Any other concerns? We got Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Ashley, I have a little clarification. So it's when the developer completes Phase Two, then how much is he going to be responsible for?
Okay.
How much do you anticipate him paying?
Mayor Pro Tem, Rusing. Actually, approval of the final plat for Phase Two of Hidden Hills is contingent upon payment of this contribution towards the intersection improvements.
So anybody have a number, how much that's going to be?
Let's say $375,000 to half a million dollars is our estimate. That's a rough estimate. We have yet to have those detailed negotiations with the developer, but that's a rough estimate. What we believe, we will ultimately be stipulating that the developer contribute towards the developer's fair share of improvements at this intersection.
So it's not engraved in stone? It's something you still have to negotiate with the developer?
Basically, the developer is going to be stipulated to contribute certain dollar amount towards intersection improvements based on the impact of Hidden Hills' development on traffic at this intersection. And so a traffic impact analysis has already been done, and it shows that certain improvements are warranted at this intersection because of Hidden Hills' development. And so we know what the developer needs to do when it was considered as a signalized intersection, which are turn lane improvements. And we know the value of those. We also know that it needs to be signalized, and the developer would need to pay his or her fair share of the signal improvements. Now, not all traffic going through this intersection, obviously, is generated by Hidden Hills. So it's proportional to the impact, and that's what is spelled out in the traffic impact analysis. So certain improvements, when it was considered as a signalized intersection, were recommended to be made by the developer of Hidden Hills, and we've estimated the value of those improvements at a certain dollar amount. And so that is the contribution that will be made. And we will not approve the final plat for Phase Two until that payment is made, reimbursement for the developer's fair share of improvements at that intersection.
So what if the developer sells that phase to another builder? Will that next builder-owner be responsible for this pavement?
Absolutely. Yes.
And what if we don't kick in anything? Will that roundabout still go ahead, say we don't contribute anything?
You'll have to ask the county that. That would be their decision. It's their project.
And the developer realizes that when he went in to this deal, he was told he was gonna have to kick in for a traffic light, which is a lot cheaper, but now we're gonna tell him he needs to kick in for a roundabout, which is twice as expensive?
...for the cost of the traffic light.
Mayor Pro Tem, Gwen Roach. So when a traffic impact analysis is done, it defines the improvements that are required for safe turning movement in and out of the area. Those are the improvements that the developer is obligated to build or pay an in lieu-of fee. We will be asking them for an in lieu-of fee in exchange for not building it, because the county wants to build this roundabout instead of a traffic signal. The developer's traffic impact analysis said he needed to build a signal and an acceleration and a deceleration lane. When we build this roundabout, we'll be providing a higher level of service at this intersection, but the developer is still only obligated to pay what the traffic impact analysis said he was required to build. So regardless of the developer that pays the fee, whoever pays it, they will pay for their share of a traffic signal, which is one leg of the four-way signal, and an acceleration and a deceleration lane. That's what the developer will be obligated to pay. Regardless of whether we build this roundabout, he would be obligated to pay that in lieu-of fee.
Councilman Tenny.
Ashley, great presentation. I appreciate you going over the high points of this for us, again, to refresh our memories on this. For public safety purposes, I was generally in favor of this when it was presented to us by the county several weeks ago. And in my mind, the news about this keeps getting better and better. This is the first project I've heard of in quite some time that the actual bids for it have come in under the engineer's estimate. That's fantastic. And the fact that the ask from the county to the city has gone down by 25% is huge. The fact that the developer will be on the hook, and we don't know the actual costs until we get to that point, of course, but the developer will be on the hook for the city's portion, up to 50% or 60% of that amount. This is all great news, and I really appreciate your sharing this with us, and I'll be voting in favor of this. One other piece, just really quickly, Mayor. We're often in a situation, we have been in the past, we'll be going forward where we're working with other entities, whether it's the tribe or the county, Prescott Valley, et cetera, on things where we wanna cooperate with them. And sometimes we ask them for things, sometimes they ask us for things, and we work with each other on water issues, of course, and road issues, a number of different things. I can think of a couple of different road issues coming up that we'll probably be asking for the county for help on. And it certainly behooves us to, when there's a situation, especially one that has as many positives for the city as this one, for us to participate in a positive way with them. That's all. Thanks.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. I'd just like to make some more comments. Rather than focus on Hidden Hills, we need to focus on the whole region, especially Pioneer Park. I imagine that's going to get busier and busier, and we're gonna have more and more traffic in general as the region grows. So 10 years from now, we're gonna need the roundabout. 20 years from now, the roundabout will be a good investment. So I just look at this as an investment in the future, whether Hidden Hills is there or not. Thank you.
Well, I have a different take on this. Pioneer Parkway is the primary responsibility of the county. The Parkway itself is a county roadway. They're responsible for its maintenance, its planning, and its future needs. This particular roundabout is being sold to us as a benefit to the city. There's very, very, very little benefit to the city, other than the fact that the county's getting $750,000 of our taxpayer money. The growing developments in Williamson Valley will certainly be using Pioneer Parkway. The growing development in Stringfield Ranch will certainly be utilizing Pioneer Parkway. As Hidden Hills expands, they'll certainly be using Pioneer Parkway. They're in this city, however, their property taxes will be going up significantly because of the development in these homes. And with the increased property tax, where does the property tax go? It goes to the county. Where does the increased property tax from Stringfield Ranch go? Goes to the county. Where does the increase in property tax from Williamson Valley go? It goes to the county. So the county is gonna benefit significantly from the development in this area so that they can use that additional income to be able to maintain the road that is gonna benefit most of those locations. Why the City of Prescott and our taxpayers should have to foot the bill for these benefits when the city itself will get very little benefit from it and certainly pay a very high premium for it? So I think it's pretty clear that the county and the developers are both gonna develop substantially by the creation of this roundabout, and they should pay the bill for it. So with that being said, I would not support this. If we have to build a signalized intersection, that would be an appropriate cost for us to share. But going far beyond what is needed here because of the substantial and very long-term benefits that the county is gonna reap from this, I certainly can't support it. At one time, I went to the county for a small accommodation for them to restripe the two outer turn lanes on 89A coming into Willow Creek Road. It would've cost them about $400 to do that, because it's an unusual intersection that doesn't have right angles. And when you have two turn lanes coming directly at you, when you're making a northward turn on a single turn lane, I've seen vehicle after vehicle after vehicle stop short in the middle of the intersection, 'cause they're afraid cars are gonna come and run right into them. And they'll stop, and sometimes the car behind them will hit them because they didn't expect them to stop. But we can't ask them for a small accommodation for them to restripe that intersection to make it safer? That's too much to ask. Well, if that's too much to ask, then this is way too much to ask. So I'm voting no. I'll entertain a motion.
Couple more comments, I think. We have more comments?
No public comment, Mayor. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 2022-1825.
I had my light on. I've had my light on for several minutes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your point of view, but I respectfully disagree with you. I think it's a relatively small ask when we know that they're asking $750,000, and then Hidden Hills is gonna pay anywhere between $375,000 and $450,000 of that. So we're now being asked to pay about $300,000 for a roundabout into a recreation complex that is used by thousands of people for the Brownlow Trail, the hockey, Kayla's Hands, the pickleball courts, the softball fields. Residents of the City of Prescott would be benefited by the added safety of this roundabout because we have thousands and thousands of people that are using these recreation facilities every... every week, and that roundabout will benefit the cities, residents of the city of Prescott in terms of safety.
Mayor, can I say something?
Please do.
Thank you. You know, I walked into this meeting agreeing with the mayor, surprisingly. But I think that we've got to start somewhere with cooperation.
017-024A7, an amendment to City Contract Number 2017-024 with Fan Environmental LLC for construction rehabilitation of production well number three, Chino Valley.
Reduce that just a little bit. Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Tim Sherwood, Public Works. Item I have for you today is just an extension of our original Chino well production program. The city owns and operates five active wells in the Chino Valley area. Wells were drilled and equipped between 1947 and 1962. The most major recent upgrades to the wells were done in 1987. The wellhouses, electrical controls, mechanical equipment are beyond their useful service life and need to be replaced. Council approved the production well rehabilitation program design-build contract with Fan Environmental in February of 2017. Well number three is the third well in the program that we've done. We've completed well number five in 2018, as well as well number four in 2020. Construction is scheduled to start in October of this year, 2022. That's, we usually let our high-demand season go pass before we start working on our wells. Due to continuing delays in acquiring pumps, piping, motors, electrical equipment, staff is requesting the contractor order these items as quickly as possible so we can get started in October, and so the equipment will be available when the project starts. The GMP submitted by Fan Environmental and reviewed and approved by staff is for $2,584,585. And funding for this project is budgeted in the FY '23 budget from the Water Fund. And I will be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Mayor Pro-Tam.
Thank you. Is this well going to be drilled deeper or just refurbished with new pumps?
Rehabilitated. We're not sure what the condition of the well casing currently is. It's been, quite some times, some work's been on it. The well will be in the same location it currently is.
So you won't be drilling it any deeper?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns?
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2017-024A7. Second. Oh, I didn't hear. Sorry.
Passes seven zero.
That's killing me.
No, why did you say?
Approval of City Contract Number 2022-221 with MSW Consultants to conduct a solid waste rate study.
Good afternoon, Mayor Good, members of the council, Ashley Couch, Public Works. What we have before you this afternoon to consider is that we execute a contract of roughly $35,000 to a consultant to do a solid waste rate study. It's the same consultant we used back in 2018. And the reason that we're asking to do a solid waste rate study is to make sure that the rates that are being charged for solid waste are commensurate with the expenses incurred by the city's solid waste program. As you're aware, this is an enterprise fund, so the fees collected pay for the service. It's not intermingled with the greater city budget. As with most types of services and construction, costs have been escalating, and that has impacted our solid waste program. Right now, the transfer station pays $69.06 per ton just for hauling and disposal of solid waste, and we charge $72 a ton. So we're operating our transfer station on $2.94 a ton, and that's not nearly enough. Let's talk about fleet. The industry standard is seven years for solid waste collection vehicles. They get a lot of miles. They, you know, they're always in, you know, five days a week, they're in operation, sometimes more than five days a week. And it's a pretty mechanically intense, you know, starting, stopping, braking, you know, and mechanical equipment. And so industry standard is seven years to replace those, and our fleet, the average age is 6.7 years old. So obviously, we're nearing the end of life for a lot of the fleet for collection vehicles. Also, we've seen increased usage at the transfer station. We did an informal poll, and about 43, in the month of April, and 43% of the customers using the transfer station do not live in the city of Prescott. They either live in Chino Valley, or Prescott Valley, or the county, or other places. So it's really become a regional service that we provide at the expense of the city of Prescott. Just to give you an idea how much the increased usage is, and FY '16, our customers at the transfer station were 78,000 per year. And in this year, we're estimating, we're almost at the end of fiscal year, but still have a few, a couple of weeks left, 100,000. So from 78,000 to 100,000. And the tonnage has gone up as well. FY '16, it was 62,000 tons, and we're up to 75,000 tons. So as you can see, there's, you know, increased costs incurred by the program. Those need to be passed on to the ratepayers, people that pay fees at the transfer station, people that pay for solid waste collection. And so this is a study, and in December, we'll bring the results back from the study and present them to City Council to consider making adjustments to the solid waste rates to make sure that they're commensurate with the expenses incurred by the solid waste program. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mayor, I think we'll go with Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Moore? No. I just had a question in that rate study. Would they look at possibly having a different rate for non-community members? Like, a lot of times, you have to show your ID that you're in the city of Prescott to participate perhaps in a particular program. Would they charge a higher rate, for example, for people that are living in the county or in other outlying communities that are using our services as a way of offsetting our cost?
That could be a possibility that's presented to City Council when we come back in December, and if it's the desire of the council, that's something that we can look at. I do want to mention, however, that a lot of the people that may not be residents of Prescott that are using the transfer station, they may be, let's say it's a landscaping company from Prescott Valley, and they come into Prescott and they're doing, you know, landscaping for Prescott residents, and then they go out to the transfer station. So it's a little blurry as to, is that a Prescott customer, or is that a Prescott Valley customer? Because they're actually doing work and, you know, within the city of Prescott and then disposing of that at the transfer station, so.
And in that scenario, though, that landscaper whose business is outside the city of Prescott, those funds are not going to the city of Prescott either. The sales tax that they're generating, that would be paid to their business, which is in another community, and we would not be collecting those sales tax revenue and those funds for that company as well.
Well, we would, we would recover the tipping fees at the transfer station. So anybody that goes in, whether they're a city customer or anybody else for that matter, they're subject to the tipping, to the dumping fees at the transfer station. So to a certain extent, they are paying for the service. But those are things that we can certainly evaluate more detail as we do the study.
Councilman Moore, you beg an interesting question. Do we want to be a regional solid waste facility or not? And I think that as part of the rate study findings, I think from a policy perspective, council's going to have to decide how they want to treat out of city residents.
I agree. It's a good question. Thank you.
Pro-Tam.
Oh, I just have a question. Is this going to affect the mulch program where people can dump yard waste and then pick up free mulch, the chipping department over there?
So this is just a rate study. Basically, we're analyzing current operations and comparing the cost of those operations, and then looking at what fees we need to charge to recover the cost of those operations. We do have some plans to reconfigure the transfer station going forward. And those are things that we can, you know, that's a little bit lagging from this rate study. You know, as you can see, you know, if you're operating a transfer station on $3 a ton, you've got to do something now.
Right.
Okay? And so, you know, we're operating at, you know, it's very difficult to operate a transfer station for $3 a ton. It's just, we need to be charging a lot more for the service. So in my opinion, we need to move forward. Now, we've heard some concerns from some of you about transfer station operations. You already voted on offense today. And we're considering moving the chipping operation closer to the, what we call the inert pile. It's a big pile of concrete rubble and rebar and things like that. You know, maybe marginally better than where it is today, but an improvement nonetheless. There are a number of improvements that need to be done at the transfer station, a new scale. You know, if you go out there, you see, there's a long line. And so operationally, there are some adjustments that need to be made at the transfer station to improve operational efficiency. And those are things that Public Works Department is going to consider moving forward. But really, I think at this time, we just need to look at, you know, how much it's costing us now to provide this service and make adjustments to the solid waste rates that we're charging so that we get cost recovery.
I agree. It's part of our infrastructure. We need to keep our infrastructure up with our growth as our community grows.
Ask one more. Do you have another question?
No, sorry.
No, I mean, I agree. I think doing an analysis like this is long overdue. We've become a primary transfer station for a broad area of the county now. As costs have escalated, whether it's gasoline or diesel, moving all the way to the Gray Wolf Station is costing more and more and more for some of these haulers to be able to utilize that. So it becomes much less expensive to dump their loads here. And if we're going to expect that that will continue as we develop more electric, big electric trucks and things like that, we're probably going to have a lot heavier loads dropped here, and we're going to have to be able to process them in a cost-effective manner. So being able to analyze where we are and where we're going, I think, is highly necessary. And this is a modest amount to do such a study.
So I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2022-221.
Second. Yeah, motion is second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero. Adoption of Ordinance Number 2022-1802, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning of certain property within the city of Prescott, generally located at the southwest corner of Pennion Oaks Drive and Willow Creek Road, from residential rural estate two acre, RE two acre zoning district to Business General, BG zoning district, to allow for an indoor self-storage facility on parcel number 106-02-052C located at 5900 Willow Creek Road. Property owner Granite Property Investments LLC, applicant Granite Basin Engineering.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. It is good evening. Yeah, okay. We'll try to make this as painless as possible. You guys have had a very long day. First, we're going to start off with our general plan and land use map. Anytime a project comes forward, the first thing we look at is our general plan to make sure it's in conformance with our adopted general plan. Right now, we're under the 2015 general plan. The area in question is this area right in here. And within this general plan, it did designate this area as commercial. It's been like that in the last two general plans. That's something that's not changed. So here's a close-up of it to show, these are the, well, we're looking at this parcel right now, the one on the south of Pennion Oaks Drive. So we have Willow Creek Road, Pennion Oaks, and we're looking at the south parcel today. In the 2015 general plan, it does designate this as commercial, which allows for a variety of different types of commercial uses, including retail and all those other types of uses. Right now, the parcel is zoned RE two acre. That came over from when it was annexed from the county. At the county, when it came in, it was an RCU two A, which is a holding zone in the county. So for areas that were never detailed zoned or have not come through for other zoning requirements. So when we annexed property, we adopted into a similar zoning, which in our case was the RE two acre. Under the RE two acre, it allows for a single-family residential under two acre minimum lot sizes. Maximum building heights are 35 feet, and accessory structures can go up to five feet from the rear property line, it can be up to 20 feet. So those are the type of things that could be developed under the existing zoning. And this kind of explains a little bit more about the RE two acre zoning. It's more rural and agricultural type of zoning, not more, you don't really see it inside the more developed rural area, I mean, sorry, urban areas. This is mostly designed to preserve extensive open space and maintain real residential character of the area. What's being proposed to you is a Business General zoning. Under the Business General zoning, there are more uses are often located along the collectorial arterial street, which Willow Creek is. This is also considered a commercial corridor in our land use plan. So this was always designated for a commercial corridor in this area. There was questions about whether and why we weren't doing it to a neighborhood-oriented business, an NOB zoning district. Under the NOB zoning district, it only allows, it restricts the size of the buildings to 12,000 square feet maximum. So they would have to split the building up into different buildings around the property and may have more impact, and the way they're developing it may not accommodate that. So before I use a request for rezoning from the RE two acre to the Business General. So what's being proposed, they did have a couple of reiterations of the property. This did go through a number of meetings with the Planning and Zoning Commission. This did go through a number of meetings with the Planning and Zoning Commission. At the October 28th, 2021 meeting, they did have the storage facility, and then they also had a commercial building that would have probably had medical, I mean, medical or retail, but they weren't really sure what type of uses. At that meeting, they deferred it to not date specific because at the time, they did not do a traffic impact analysis. And we were looking at, this is the south parcel, we're also looking at the north parcel on the other side of Pinion Oaks Drive, and we wanted to get an idea of what kind of traffic this was all going to generate. So they came back in April, the April 14th, 2022. At that time, they still had the two different types of uses on the property. But the applicant said that they wanted to get rid of that commercial building, they wanted to expand the storage facility. They're seeing more of a need of a storage facility. They have waiting lists for ones that are existing. We don't have enough storage facilities. So when they came back for the May 12th meeting this year, they came back with this proposal, the site plan. It was sent out for review prior to bringing it forward for fire, airport, everybody to review it. There was no issues or concerns. They did have to make a couple of modifications, did deal with some drainage, which they did. The airport stated that they didn't have any concerns. They're going to have to do a navigation easement, this is in the airport influence area, and they also have to do a 7460 for the proposed height. So in the Business General zoning district, they are allowed a 50-foot height. What they're proposing here is 20 feet, and it is going to be cut into the bank. There is some significant grade on the property, so they're going to be cutting into the bank. So it won't be that much higher over here, it'd be 10 feet, and then 20 feet on this side. So the max of this building is going to be at any point is 20 feet in height, which if it was developed as a residential and accessory building, can be 20 feet in height and up to five feet from that rear property line against those properties. This is in a commercial corridor. We have more restrictions, there's additional landscaping, buffering required, color restrictions, and other development criteria to make sure it doesn't impact the area negatively. This also has to go through a conditional use permit process once the, if the rezoning is approved. Basically, that goes in front of the Board of Adjustments, and we can add any additional development criteria in regards to lighting, landscaping, and other impacts that may affect those adjacent property owners adjacent to the property. They did do a traffic impact analysis for, it was, when they did the traffic impact analysis, it was for the storage facility and the commercial building. So it had a little bit more recommendations. Once this is developed, a storage facility has like some of the least amount of traffic. Kind of similar to a cemetery. Once the stuff's put in, you come visit it a couple times a year. That's about it. So it is very limited traffic for these type of facilities from our experience. So, but there are some things they are going to have to do to Pinion Oaks Drive. We're going to hopefully make sure they have to do that before they start building the facility and that be coordinated through our Public Works Department. Here, so this does go through many Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. There was a lot of public input, and most of it's about impacts to the traffic. This is a horrible intersection, we know that. And so we're hoping that the development of this and the improvements they're going to be doing between this development and maybe the other development will help improve those issues that we have there until something more can be done. But the May 12th, 2022 Planning Commission, they did vote unanimously to make remain approval of the rezoning with the revised site plan, so it will be approved per the site plan. So at any time in the future, they want to do something different, demo it, I don't see that happening, or they decide not to build this and want to do something different, it will have to come back through the public hearing process to amend the site plan. So it is tied to this site plan that you'd be approving today if you choose to approve this. And that concludes my presentation. I'm free to answer any questions you can have.
Councilman Moore?
I think Mr. Tenny was first.
All right, Councilman Tenny.
Thank you, Councilman Moore, and thank you, Mayor.
All those slides, people.
I would be good either way, appreciate that. Thank you for the presentation. Typically, when we have one of our city boards and commissions recommend something particular, if it's unanimous, I'm inclined to go along with their recommendation. I don't think that I am in this case. I really appreciate, we've got a lot of residents here from the area who have stayed with us way past my bedtime. Apologize that things have taken so long today, but we appreciate your participation in the process and the many letters that we've received. It's not unusual for us to receive a lot of feedback about things that the council has to consider. The unusual thing for me in this case is we're asking to not just look at is, does an existing set of contracts and permits meet with things, but we're being asked to change the zoning. And we might, if we're looking at a zoning change, there should be clear benefits to the community for that. And I don't see those clear benefits in this case. I do see some of the issues that have been presented to us in terms of commercial traffic being routed onto residential street, et cetera. There's just a lot of concerns for me, so I'm not inclined to vote in favor of this at this time. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm on a similar page, I think, with Councilman Tenny. I'm, I have real questions about why, when we, this project first approached, and I've been at the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings as a liaison when the Planning and Zoning Commission expressed their concerns. I'm curious why we didn't go back, and I feel bad for the person developing this property because they have been accommodating, and they've made changes along the way. But I think that neighborhood-oriented business zoning makes a lot of sense in this area. I think it's appropriate and it's fair to the residents who have been there a long time. I understand that the general plan calls for commercial development. I've sat down with a lot of the residents of Pinion Oaks and talked to them. In fact, there's a gentleman in the crowd out there that sat down with me and brought up the concern that I asked about neighborhood-oriented business. And I think my concern is, this is going to have a detrimental impact to the people who live in this neighborhood, and they've been there for a long time. They're not opposed to commercial. I've talked to them. They don't say, no commercial can exist here. They just want to make sure that it's not going to be a fast food restaurant or something that's really going to negatively impact their way of life. And I think about their neighborhood as being walkable, and I think what this will do is it'll take away that benefit from them. And I agree with Councilman Tenny's sentiment. I don't see the greater benefit for the community. I, one thing I do want to ask, you mentioned that there are things that have to be done to Pinion Oaks Drive. What are those things? And what are assurances that they'll happen?
Well, before they can even start construction, they'll have to do the improvements for the TIA, now being in coordination with our traffic engineer, such as restriping Pinion Oaks Drive to make it where you have the right and left turn lanes. Right now, they don't have that there. And there are some other improvements on Willow Creek Road for traffic circulation they may have to do. Like I said, with this project, this is the least impact for traffic. The other side of the, that's where most of the concerns are coming from is from the north proposal with the other proposal, the other rezoning request. This one, like I said, once it's developed, it's the least amount of traffic you can have for a project. So it's going to be a large building on this property. I mean, it's 122,000 square feet, so it is a significantly large building. If they were to go to NOB, they would have to break this up into many different little buildings, about 12,000 square feet each is the max they could do. Otherwise, they'd have to go to the Board of Adjustment and ask for another CUP, one just to have the facility there, but also to allow for the larger building. So that would, and if we wanted to do NOB, we would have to come back, go back through the Planning and Zoning Commission and go back through the hearing process.
Thank you.
Mayor Protim Rusi.
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
There is a representative here, yes.
Could we, could we hear from him? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I represent the owner of the proposed project, and I think the key thing here is this project would have the least impact as far as traffic for a commercial project that you can have anywhere. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question, Mayor. Go ahead.
Well, can you just finish? Thank you. When I was at the Planning and Zoning meeting, the owner was Justin Scott. Is he still the owner?
Yes, he is, he's out of town right now.
Okay. And he said that this storage project was going to mostly cater to the Emory Riddle students so that they would, when the dorms closed, they would have someplace to store their belongings until they came back for the next semester. And it was all going to be managed online. There wasn't going to be someone living there or anything.
That's correct.
And then it was just going to be Emory Riddle people just kind of coming and going occasionally.
That's, that's one of the uses for the project. There's a demand in the city, in the county for storage space. There just isn't anything available currently at all. The other thing that this project does is it provides all of the interior of the building for people moving furniture into the building and so on and so forth. It doesn't impact anything outside of the building. Once they offload and go into the building, because it will be conditioned space, so once they go inside, there's no noise, there's no visual, somebody moving whatever it is that they're moving in, into the project. So it's a, it's a very clean operation also.
What are the plans for landscaping to create a buffer between honeysuckle and the, and the major part of the facility?
We want to be a good neighbor to the people that live adjacent to the property. I've talked to them personally on the last occasion that we came before the board, and we want to limit the height of the building. We want to protect their privacy from our building. We don't want to block their views any more than what we have to. So we've taken into consideration all of those things, and we're happy to landscape and make what would make these people very happy with the, with the project.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I have several concerns. I'm really concerned that the Planning and Zoning Commission would give unanimous approval to a project that would require access to a business that fronts Willow Creek Road off of Pinion Oaks Drive. I feel like if the business is fronting Willow Creek Road, then the access should be from Willow Creek Road and not off of a neighborhood side street. That doesn't seem appropriate to me. So that's one concern. I also have a concern that probably isn't legitimate, but I just feel like if we approve this project, it's just going to be the beginning of the end for commercial development all along that area. I just kind of feel like this would be the first project that would start that. I am in agreement with Brandon. I really feel like NOB zoning would be more appropriate for this area instead of Business General. I also have a concern, it looks like this road goes all the way around the building, and so there's a road that would be close to the back of people's property, and I would imagine there'd be security lighting at night because you've got a commercial building. And I own a business and a shopping center, and we have, you know, security lighting in the back of our building, and that security lighting is going to be right in people's yards, literally. And so that's another concern I have. And I think those are my main concerns, that I just want to express those publicly.
Councilman Shesky, I believe you're up next.
Thanks, Mayor. My biggest concern, like Councilman Moore, is the lighting. You know, I think you're really, really close to a neighborhood, and can you give us a little idea of what kind of lighting you'd have and, you know, just the placement and, you know, they talk about security lighting. You know, I think that that's only reasonable, but also you're backed up to a neighborhood. So if you could explain what that looks like, I'd appreciate it.
You're correct. We do need security lighting, but we don't need security lighting all night long. If we have a motion detector type lighting, if somebody were to approach the building from the outside and that went off, that would be just temporarily, but it was, it might be enough to chase them off the site. But as far as all-night lighting, no, no, that's not what's intended here. We want to make this very quiet, very private type of business, which it is.
You know, I really like the idea that this is going to be a very low traffic impact situation. I mean, you know, be careful what you wish for, you may just get it. I mean, we talk about, you know, neighborhood business, but neighborhood business can be quite busy. So, you know, on one hand, yeah, we're going to get some lighting. On the other hand, we're getting very low impact to the neighborhood. But Tammy, I'd like to know what got Planning and Zoning to unanimously approve this thing?
The fact that they addressed all the concerns, there was no issues from our reviewing agencies. It's a low-impact use of the property. In regards to lighting, we do have dark sky requirements. So anything, no light can spill into the neighbor's yards. So they all have to be fully shielded. We do get a lighting analysis with the project to make sure that it's zero at those boundaries. So there is no light spillage into the neighbor's residences. They have to be fully shielded, they can't be visible seen, they're going to let shine down. So in regards to impact, and we can work, and then with landscaping along that boundary too, it can help minimize the impact of those lights. And that's all criteria that's required in a commercial corridor. Because this isn't a commercial corridor. That whole corridor, Willow Creek Road from Pioneer Parkway all the way down is a commercial corridor in our land use plan and the general plan. So we do, when commercial developments, we do take in consideration when we're looking at it, and it'll also be looked at by the Board of Adjustments with the CUP process. Those are the type of things that we look at for additional criteria to minimize the impacts to those residences along that property boundary. Additional landscaping, additional screening, additional, looking at the lighting to make sure there's limited lighting on that side. That's all stuff that we're going to look at with our CUP process as it moves forward. And I think that's why the commission didn't have a concern, because there's still another step they have to take to, before they finish this project, to address the impacts to those adjacent residential properties.
Okay, so we talked about the declining landscape and the fact that you're going to actually dig into the landscape in order to keep the building
Low.
Low. What will the people in Pinion Oaks if, in fact, this thing gets approved, which it doesn't sound like there are much, there's much assent on this thing, but how much of the building are people going to, is people going to see?
Right now, you're looking at a building that's 20, 25 feet max. Coming down with that, if you, if you realize where the church sits on that property, it's way up, way up high. Our roof line's going to be probably lower than what the foundation of that church is sitting. So the idea is to get the project down, get a very low profile, get it well landscaped, get it so that the lighting requirements, whatever they are, we only operate daylight hours. Now typically, we don't open at 4:35 in the summertime, but daylight hours being from six to, in the summertime, say six to eight, six to nine, something like that, max. So the operation is strictly daylights.
There would be no access after dark?
That's correct.
Okay, so security lighting most likely wouldn't be going on and off after dark?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mayor, but I have just another concern. The traffic, I mean, the ingress egress on Pinion Oaks Drive. I can't imagine trying to turn in further down off of Willow Creek. That's kamikaze already. Do you see any opportunity to Do you see any opportunity to improve that intersection? I'm not sure how with a light or something to, to, you know, benefit the whole area.
That was part of the traffic impact analysis that was done and reviewed by our, improved by our traffic engineer. Like I said, when, when they originally did the traffic impact analysis for this site, that it was the storage facility and a commercial building, which required more improvements. But when the, when we reviewed the, the new site plan with the existing traffic impact analysis, most of those things are just going to be required. They're going to have to, at Pinion Oaks Drive, they're going to have to improve this intersection here to make it wider, and we're going to have two churn lanes, which they don't have now. And there are also maybe some improvements on Willow Creek Road, down the road, to allow for a U-turn. There are some other things that were required, that may be required. We're still waiting to see what happens with the north parcel with that one. So, that was going to trigger a lot more requirements for addition, because there was the additional traffic with that project. But with this one, with it being such a low-impact, that there's not, there wasn't a lot of concerns with that moving forward. And then there was going to be minimum improvements required at that intersection.
Did you figure out how many, in the traffic analysis, how many people were going to be coming in and out every day?
On the average...
Not every day. I mean, you, you're talking occasionally, I'd say.
The average day, we never see more than anywhere from five to seven cars at any one time, and that's it.
At, on any one day or at any one time?
Any one day, you could see five to seven car, five to six cars at the facility.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That's it.
Thanks, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hall?
Thank you. So, with regards to its current zoning right now, what are, is it, is it kind of what they're talking about with the low retail, like the smaller buildings, low retail? What...
It's residential. So, one house per two acres.
One house per two acres, although it's in the commercial corridor?
Correct. So, when it came in, this is a three-point, sorry, 3.35 acre parcel, so it can't be split. It could be developed right now as it is. It could be developed with a single-family residence and a guest house and other accessory buildings. So, when it was annexed into the city of Prescott, it was RCE 2A, which is the holding zone for the county residential, single-family, two-acre minimum. So, when we annex a piece of property, if they are not asking for a rezoning at that time, we bring it in under the exist, the similar zoning that we have, which is the RE 2 acre. So, right now, that's what it is, residential, two-acre, hence why it hasn't been developed.
Okay. So, any type of change to have, like a retail or anything, would still go through a rezoning? It would just be to a different point?
Correct.
Okay. So, and, and, and this is just obviously me being new, but I am not, is, have we voted down as a council, things that have been unanimously approved by P&amp;Z? Is that something that has happened? Okay. Is it consistent? Is it something that happens on the regular? Is it, I guess I'm just not familiar with that. If we have a Planning and Zoning Commission in place to look at these things, how does that work with regards to functionality of...
Sorry. I'm sitting in the audience nodding and...
I know. Sorry. I couldn't help but like, make, I'm zoning in on you. Sorry.
Council has voted in opposition to recommendations from Planning Commission.
Right.
It's not common. Normally, the Planning Commission's recommendations are very thorough. They've looked at something pretty thoroughly, in this case, three meetings worth of thorough, before they make a recommendation to you. So, it, it's not common, but it certainly happens.
Yeah.
The determinations you make are not necessarily just a determination of good planning, which is all the Planning Commission is supposed to do.
Yeah. They've got their ducks in a row, and what they're applying for is consistent with what they're doing. So, and then my last question, when it comes to making this decision, I mean, I understand that sometimes it's nicer to see retail and restaurants and things that are walkable and absolutely that that's, but I'm assuming that this is dictated by market demand, that it's in, is something that's needed versus seeing a lot of vacant retail spaces and medical offices vacant. And, I mean, I know just even on Willow Creek, right where we're talking about, there is vacancy and things like that, and it's a market demand for this type of building in lieu of a restaurant, in lieu of retail.
There's a gigantic demand for this type of business.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Shishka, you had another question?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Did you have another question?
No, sir.
And we have Mayor Protem.
Thank you. In response to Mr. Shishka's question about planning and zoning, why they would approve this, you know, unanimously, well, I was at the meeting, and the other half of the meeting was discussion of a Dunkin' Donuts and a group of pads for like a fast-food row on north of Pinion Oaks behind everyone's houses. So, that was definitely not, I, I mean, I was astounded. I thought, oh, God, that'd be terrible to have that behind your house. And so, then, when the next applicant came up with this project, it made it look really good compared to having a Dunkin' Donuts. So, I think that's kind of what they were, kind of what they were thinking. And my other concern is, you know, having a huge mini-storage behind your home, is that going to help your property values? And it will probably decrease them. And that's what I'm, I'm concerned about. And, and, you know, we just have to look at the big picture when Pinion Oaks, the master plan for Pinion Oaks, it never should have been approved with not taking into consideration that that was going to be a corner with commercial probably and having its own access. You know, it's just, it, it was just from the start, not designed right for ingress and egress. And the reason why it's still residential is because it's fewer, less property taxes. You know, people like to keep things residential, even though they know it's going to be a commercial project and, you know, in the future. So, there's a lot to, a lot to look at here. Thank you.
Councilman Tenny?
Y'all be brief. It gets farther past my bedtime all the time. I appreciate this in a commercial corridor and that folks who moved into the area were aware of that going in. And I appreciate also that if this were already zoned business general, this is as low-impact as you could ask for. No question about that. We've, we've looked at that. And so, as far as meeting planning, proper planning and good planning, I think was, was the term, if it were already business general, I'd agree 100%. And so, sometimes, again, we have folks who have moved in next to business general property, and then they come, they say, I don't want a business built on the business general. I go, I'm not sure how I can help you. This is a different situation. These people moved in next to a place that is zoned residential for one house per two acres. I think they have every reasonable expectation that that is what would go in, not a Dunkin' Donuts, not even a terrific storage unit, which we really need and, and being represented by a super-nice guy, et cetera, et cetera. But I, I just don't feel comfortable changing the zoning for this because of, of the way that it will impact the, the property owners. That's all. Thanks. The nearby property.
Mayor Protem, you up again?
No, I'm sorry. I just forgot to...
All right. Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one additional comment. I've kind of already mentioned it, but I do have, you know, like I said, a serious concern that business access would be off of private residential street. And was there any consideration in the Planning and Zoning meetings about adding a deceleration and an acceleration lane on Willow Creek for business access from Willow Creek instead of through a neighborhood?
Because of the terrain along Willow Creek Road here, there's no place there that could accommodate that. And this is not a private street, it's a public city street. Just, but that, that was because of the, there is no place here that could meet safety requirements for a deceleration acceleration lane.
They couldn't just blade it down and make a lane there? I mean, that's, we have heavy equipment that can easily move a hillside, or, it seems like we do that all the time.
Too much of it.
From the traffic standpoint, that was not something that was recommended for this type of development.
Okay.
Any other concerns or questions?
Just one here. Mike, I'd like to hear when the neighbors actually get up and speak, because I'm sure quite a few of you will. What business would even have a chance of succeeding in that, or commercial or whatever would have a chance of succeeding at that spot? If you've thought about that? And, you know, I, I think that Councilman Tenny and Councilman Moore have, have given us some compelling reasons to vote no on this situation. But I also don't like the fact that we possibly could be rendering the, the property totally useless, because this is low-impact. And it's, the traffic is a bare minimum, if in fact you're, you know, giving us the straight scoop. So, I can't wait to hear from the neighbors.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's time to hear from the neighbors.
Okay. Robbie Graves?
Thank you. I have to go too.
Don't we all?
So, just, I mean, I thought we had that, another use under the RE 2 acre that could come in here is a church. A church would have significant traffic. So, there are some uses that are allowed in residential areas that would have more, with the going through a CUP process. I just wanted to throw that out there.
I have a church right next to it right now.
Go ahead.
Okay. Robbie Graves, 845 Panicum. Thank you for letting me speak first. I've been here for four hours. I have a meeting, I'm supposed to be at 7 o'clock. I have so much written down here, but most of it was said by Councilman Moore, Montoya, Councilman Tenny. The main thing is, anything that can't be accessed off of Willow Creek is ridiculous. That is a residential street. I mean, I don't know how many feet or yards that is off Willow Creek till you get to somebody's backyard. It's a very short distance. To be bringing in traffic to a business, it's going to greatly affect the neighborhood. It's going to hurt the property value, as was mentioned. The lighting, it's, it's going to hurt the people in the back, in the back. Those people, when they bought the home, it was, I'm sure they paid top dollar for that lot to have the Dells. We're going to, he said it, they're going to impact as little as possible. Well, you're going to have some impact, putting that in there. Like I said, I've, I've got tons of things on here. I've got to run. I'm sure our other neighbors will bring things up. But the, the really big thing is, I don't know how this got passed the Planning and Zoning Commission either. We went to every meeting, except for apparently the last one, that I, we had personally called to find out when it was going to be. We were told it was postponed. So, we didn't show up, we didn't hear about that it was even there until after it was done with, and they passed it. And there was enough people that spoke out there that they chaired it. They chaired it then, and how this got slipped through is beyond me. And I'd ask you to please, please, take into consideration of what this is going to do to our neighborhood. Okay? Thank you.
Susan Wade?
You know, I'm kind of glad we're last, because I got an opportunity to watch you at work. And I appreciate that you like clarification. I appreciate that you care about safety. And that's what my concern is. Clarification in that we thought we could be at the zoning meeting, and we're told that it had been canceled. So, we weren't there. I understand that they'll be open from 6 to 9. Many of my neighbors do walk, as some of you mentioned. We walk our dogs, we walk for exercise, and we walk early at 6 o'clock to beat the sun or late at night, at 9, when the sun is down. The only time you see us walking in the middle of the day is in the one or two months of really cold winter we get. That's the only time you'll see us walking then. And I question whether the people who are coming to a storage facility are going to be watching out for us as we walk our paths. I owned a business in Georgia, RV park, and somebody wanted to rezone there as well. And they said they were just going to cater to high-end people with big rigs, and they couldn't have made it had they done that. I think sometimes people think they can cater to a certain group of people, but reality is that you have to cater to the people that you, the only people you can keep out are people who are doing illegal things. So, I would consider that, yeah, you might think that they're just want to cater to Emory Riddle students, and they might really, truly want to. But if they want to stay in business, they're going to have to cater to people who want to rent their facility. And it's a large facility. I doubt very seriously that there's going to be only five or six cars there a day. My thing too, like everybody else and like some of you have said, is I just think the entrance needs to be off of Willow Creek. If it's a business, it needs to have a business road entrance, not one that's hard to find, and not one that goes down private streets. I appreciate your listening to me today, and I pray, pray that you will vote no on this.
Steve Antle?
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you. I know it's late, 5871 Honeysuckle Road. You look at the left side up there, I'm looking at 20 feet, a building. I'm the first house on Honeysuckle and Pinion Oaks, southeast corner. So, that's what I'm going to look at. That road is going to be 10 feet from my property line, people going in and out. And I disagree with a lot of points being made over here, because we're not talking about ingress and egress off of Pinion Oaks. What it is today, the traffic on Willow Creek Road is a freeway. About 750 feet from the intersection of Willow Creek and Pioneer Parkway is Pinion Oaks, about a quarter of a mile. Cars are going 45 to 55 miles an hour by the time you hit that intersection. People aren't screwing around when they take a left off of, you know, Pioneer Parkway or coming through, straight through. They're going at 45 to 50 miles an hour when they hit that intersection. Now, we're talking about bringing trailers in. Then these people got to pull in off of Pinion Oaks. Then they got to pull back out and take a left or take a right in front of that traffic. I've got a question. Just on that property, you say it's quarter all the way down south of us is commercial? Is a commercial in front of Emory Riddle? Does anybody know? Is that commercial? Why doesn't a building in front of Emory Riddle instead of a subdivision? There are, and I, and I agree, these units are necessary. I, I've checked it out. My background is being CPA. I know that these owners of this property turn in commercial, come pull out their last $2 million profit and laugh all the way to the bank. And they don't really give a damn what they leave behind. And I'm serious, and I'm sorry to use that word, but that's how I feel. I'm going to look at 20-foot building, which now I got shrubbery and I got natural surroundings, and it's beautiful. I listen to the traffic, I don't mind that. I was in the Scottsdale area, and it was in the traffic pattern of Scottsdale Airport, so it doesn't bother me. I like it. I love it. It's quiet music, quiet sounds. But the traffic is going to increase on Willow Creek Road. You've already approved a 10,000 residences north of there in Dupewell Ranch. What's that going to become like three years from now? That traffic pattern's going to go from, do you know what the traffic pattern is on there right now with the...
The count here? About 27,000 a day.
27,000 a day. What's going to happen when you add 10,000 houses north of there? And these people are coming down to shop in Prescott, shop at Fry's. They're not going to drive all the way to Chino to go to Safeway. So, that's going to increase to what? I can't project it. I don't have the background to do it. But the intersection is going to get worse and worse and worse, meaning Pinion Oaks Drive and Willow Creek Road, it's just going to get worse. And the gentleman's already told us our last minute, they realize it's going to reduce certain property values. Which one is mine? I've been told could be as much as 15 to 18%. Today's marketplace would be 150 to 200,000. I'd take a loss. Plus, it would be harder to sell in the future. And of course, I bought that property when it was, you know, when it is right now. These two parcels are terrible commercial... These two parcels are terrible commercial properties, because they're right on top of intersection of two highways. And this, this Willow Creek Road, which is, let's face it, is a freeway, it's a highway. You can't put a light there. Simply because the traffic taking a left, or taking a left off on, off of, on Pioneer Parkway, you'd back up all the way to the corner, because it's only seven hundred and fifty feet. I mean, it was ill-designed from the get-go, but of course, it wasn't like it is now when they designed it in ninety-nine or ninety-eight, whenever it was. But it is today. And on top of that, he wants to build a two-story building, which you won't see any two-story buildings south of that intersection, all the way down to the commercial corridor where Fry's and the car dealerships are at. Yet, within a two and a half to three mile radius, there are three self-storage units, all single level, all in a commercial industrial centers. Easy access in, out, big units. And I know they're almost filled up. I know, I agree with the gentleman that it's required, and it's necessary, and it's needed, and it's lucrative. Why not build it down farther than south in front of Euro, in front of the college? That's what they say it's going to be, but I don't, I don't think so. I think a lot of the clients are going to be in the future coming from Deepwater Ranch, smaller houses, smaller lots, smaller garages. These are the people who are going to need it. I used one over in Scottsdale. And it was off a major artery, and basically, you know, you pulled back onto the major artery. But here is, all these other units are single level. And the ingress and egress off that is going to be dangerous and get more dangerous in the next ensuing five years. There are properties on eighty-nine A where there is a big unit down on eighty-nine A, both in three miles from us, this location we're talking about now. And it is full, except for their bigger units. It could easily be built there with safe ingress and safe egress coming off eighty-nine A and getting back onto it, not having to cross traffic, taking a left down a highway. And on the one she was referring to, to the north, if you, you can't access that property unless you turn in on Pinion Oaks and then turn right to get into that property. You can't exit, if you're going north, you cannot exit that north piece of property. And no matter what they do with it, you're going to have to come in and out on Pinion Oaks Drive. Just more and more.
Your remarks.
More and more things that are going to happen, and that's going to be dangerous anybody driving there. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Tim Welty.
Hello, Tim Welty, fifty-eight oh one Honeysuckle Road. For the last twenty-three years, this has been my backyard. That's my neighbor Steve just talked. That's my, my, so I'll be looking at a big hunk of building back there if the thing gets approved. One other thing too, a lot of things, actually, we lived there twenty-three years since ninety-nine. First and foremost, yes, our devaluation of our property's going to happen, for sure. Nobody's going to live big, big hunk of building back there. If approved, what kind of screen would our property have? That hasn't even been determined yet. What monitors the safety factor stored in this structure? I mean, you see all kinds of things in there, and it could be Emory Riddle students, it could be whatever. If not monitored, how do they know the dangerous things aren't stored in my backyard? That thing is probably going to be about thirty-six foot off my property line, is where it's going to be. We were told at P and C meeting, and I think you talked about this earlier, a pension renter, all they have to do is go online, pay the rental amount, then get a code, and they're set to store. That means pretty much anything can be stored in there. Can we ask for safety detectives whenever it gets approved? You know, things might not want to risk at home in storage. Does the fire department do inspections on a facility like this? Is there any still liable if it causes disruption, harm to the residents, persons who put, excuse me, who put dangerous materials stored there, or the owner, or no oversight, or what? Again, the traffic, everybody knows who lives, lives on Pinion Oaks, Willow, Willow Creek Road, the Pinion Oaks is a dangerous intersection. But now you have trucks and trailers trying to make a left-hand turn out of there, maybe few, maybe more than a few. Left-hand turn. A lot of us that live in there now, they go, we go down to Symphony, it's real busy. It's just much more safer there. It's not worth the risk. Finally, I'd like each of the council members and the mayor to think of themselves, you lived for twenty-three years there, like we have something like that in your backyard approved. You're voting on the devaluation of property is in the thousands, checking, changing our Romanian lifestyle with this project in our backyard. One question I had, one of the questions that come up in the P and Z meeting, I asked about, they're required to put curb gutter in, and that time you didn't know. They are?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You didn't know that time. Thank you so much for your ears.
William Ray.
Hi, my name's William Ray, and I live at five six six zero four o'clock lane in Pinion Oaks. And my family really doesn't want to just resist any development, but we really wanted to make sure we had some sort of neighborhood compatible development, some sort of buffer zone between the commercial corridor and these houses. It's, this storage facility isn't going to affect my, my, my street as much as the people right behind it. The other proposed development of two fast food restaurants and a seven-eleven, that was going to really put thousands and thousands of cars on the road. We can't have that Business General. We really wanted to get some sort of neighborhood-oriented business, if any business needs to be developed. And I, I heard the council say neighborhood-oriented business would need another review and another change, but maybe it's possible to zone this for, zone both of these sections for some sort of neighborhood-oriented business. I just wanted to mention that the traffic on Pinion Oaks Drive is, is going to make it so that our family can't walk on the street. We don't have sidewalks and we don't have streetlights. We don't want sidewalks or streetlights. It works great when there's just the traffic from the neighborhood in here, but this changes, this changes everything. We have a child who's on training wheels right now on his bike, and we're hoping to be able to use these streets when we, when we walk around with him and he rides. We have the neighbors who walk their pets, and we drive slow down these streets. I drive well under the speed limit, just, just, just as slow as I can, because I, we don't have sidewalks. I don't think when we bring business traffic in on Pinion Oak Drive, and then people decide they need to head west, they're going to go down Pinion Oak Drive, and they're going to go out on Symphony and Pioneer. And that's going to change the way the neighborhood operates. What I wanted to also add is that the differences, you all probably know the difference between neighborhood-oriented businesses and Business General, some, just a couple of examples of what can be approved, what can, once it's zoned for Business General, the, the stores that can go in there could be a car wash, liquor stores, nightclubs, bars, restaurants, fast food, drive-throughs, theaters, auto sales, leasing, sports clubs, firing ranges, and gas stations with, some of those with approval. The neighborhood-oriented businesses that could go in place if this was not zoned for Business General, some other commercial businesses that could go in there are offices, print shops, antiques, art galleries, bakeries, bookstores, craft, florist, things like that. Obviously, that's still going to bring some traffic in, but it's not the high-impact traffic that Business General can bring in. And that's, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
We think Emory Riddle's going to be a big customer of ours, but we own five other mini-storage facilities right now. And we know how to operate them. The, the key thing here is, is we draw from all over the valley, as far away from Chino, Prescott Valley, and, and the entire area of Prescott. So we're not just limited to one, one location that we're hoping to draw from. We have people standing in line for our other facilities that would move in here just immediately. I want to impress on the council and the mayor that, like I've expressed to these people, the neighborhood people, that you couldn't ask for a quieter, less obtrusive business to go in this location. We have tried to accommodate their needs and our needs at the same time, but we want to be a good neighbor. And we feel that, that if we don't come in here with a facility like this, that they're going to be sorry for what, like the last gentleman said, the type of businesses that could get in here, and the traffic that would generate. So I'm hoping that you see our side of the story. And, and like I said, I can emphasize that this is by absolutely the best business location for that property that they could ask for. Any questions?
All right, no further questions. Do we have any other comments before we vote? Well, I'll make a couple of comments myself. This property is zoned residential two acre. The people that bought property next to this knew how this property was zoned. I think they have a reasonable expectation of their future based upon that zoning. Proposing it to be changed to Business Regional is a very significant change, even though I must commend the developer on a very low-impact development. Nevertheless, it does permanently change the zoning for that area.
That's impressive.
I'm sure he doesn't have a crystal ball. Apparently, someone ordered one for me and it got delivered today, but I haven't had a chance to use it yet. So not knowing what the future business environment will be, once it becomes Business Regional, it's permanently Business Regional. And it could be sold six months from now and be developed into something substantially different than what is being proposed today. So I think we have to honor the current zoning, and then make sure that a proposal comes in that fits well within that commercial, that current zoning, which would be residential two acre. I think the proposed project has a lot of merit to it, but that doesn't negate the, the zoning that the people who bought and lived there for many, many years have come to expect, and they have a right to expect. I think it's important that public input be seriously considered when it's legitimate. I think it's legitimate here. I know that they, I've watched a lot of these planning and zoning commissions, I saw a lot of these folks in attendance at those meetings, and I just find it kind of head-scratching when finally the final vote comes, all of a sudden they've told it's canceled and, oh, no, it's not canceled, it's back on. Well, it takes a little while for people to be able to rearrange their schedule to make sure they're there. I think we have an obligation to make sure they're there. So all things considered, this is a major commercial development. We're talking about a hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet, two stories. It would require a conditional use permit for its height, and that height doesn't, doesn't go to fifty?
This is proposed at twenty feet. The conditional use permit is required if, for, in the Business General zoning district for a storage facility, and what they look at is additional development contract criteria, such as landscaping, the lighting, and such, to try to mitigate any impacts to adjacent properties. That's all the CUP does, it's not for the height.
The maximum right down is twenty-five feet?
The maximum height that would be allowed in the commercial zoning is fifty feet. So right now, in the, in the residential, it's thirty-five feet.
Right. So that even makes my point even more.
So they're asking for twenty.
Just because they're asking for it doesn't mean that in the future, they could ask that it be restored to the standard maximum height.
If they, if they want to do any changes beyond what's approved on the site plan, it would have to come back through the public hearing process. Any different use, if this is approved per the site plan, which is what we're recommending, that anything different, any other uses, any other site design would have to come back through public hearing.
That's why I get concerned, because those kinds of things do happen. So with my comments, I would entertain a motion here. We've got, what, Councilman Rusing, you still have a comment?
Yes, I would just like to say, what makes Prescott so special and wonderful is their neighborhoods. And I, I just think that we need to look at our neighborhoods in such a way that, that's so important to our quality of life. And when we move here, most people are retired, and this is going to be their last home. And I just can't fathom, you know, a mini-storage belongs in an industrial area, not next to a, a community such as, such as this.
Okay, any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to deny ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash eighteen oh two in substantial conformance with the submitted site plan.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion as second. Please vote.
Mayor, just to clarify, a yes.
Clarify, this is a motion to deny. So yes vote would be to deny, and no vote would be to deny a deny.
It's too late for that.
Okay, so.
Passes six one.
You want to read that?
Yes, the motion was to deny ordinance number two zero two two dash one eight zero two. Substantial conformance doesn't necessarily matter, I think, when we're denying the motion. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is it the attorney? Okay.
That's what threw me off.
So yes is to not adopt the ordinance.
Okay.
Everybody's vote remain the same?
Yes.
Okay. Passes six one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, that's every Tuesday.
Every other, every other. Oh, every other Tuesday.
Thanks, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.
So Joe, in a year and a half, latest.